Hi. Oh.
Yeah.
So Joe.
I might need my phone.
Hi, how are you? Good, how are you? Trying to be some texting.
If you don't mind, I'm just gonna be hard there for a minute.
Oh, that was cool.
I just don't think it's the best.
So we're having some problems, so. So, but is it on right now? Is the meeting on right now?
It is.
Cause I just did it blind.
Oh, is that? Yes.
Okay, so we're on, can you start the meeting? And then we'll figure this out in the background.
Yeah.
Oh, we are good to go?
You just gotta go right to that, you could like introduce and.
Pretty much. Can you, well, we need Michael Johnson.
They're broken.
Yeah.
Oh.
You're broken.
Can you hear me though?
There's audio coming off of this.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear Joe? Yep.
Okay, cool. Alright, welcome everyone to the Durham Select Board meeting here on July 8th, 2025 at 6:30. We have a forum, so we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, so you let my first to do it from the, you could take over if you'd better have a.
From over here.
Yeah, we just want you to recall it.
I wish you a chance, I want to give you a shout out.
Alright, uh, do we have any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, do we have any public comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve last meeting's minutes?
I don't know.
Yeah. We have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? All in for you? Any opposition, seeing? Alright, uh, I have no old business listed here, does anyone have any old business that I fail to recall that need to be covered tonight? Alright, seeing none, we have our new business, which is our roles and responsibilities discussion slash workshop facilitated by GP COG. So, you've got all the board.
Okay.
Very efficient start to the meeting.
I would say we can be split, I don't know if you need any help from us.
Wow.
Um, so thank you so much for having us back, uh, we're really happy to kind of repeat a workshop that we did with some of you. I know Josh and Joe were there, but I don't think Rebecca and Julie were there. So we did this last year as kind of an orientation to the roles and responsibilities of the select board and the town manager and staff. And we're gonna talk a little bit about how to make your meetings great, what some of your responsibilities are as you get through the meetings. Um, so best practices about being like awesome select board members. So, um, I will start, you guys know who we, well, you hopefully know who we are, cause me even the executive director of the Greater Portland Council of Government and Tony Plant, who is our director of municipal collaboration. Um, Tony is a former town manager recovering.
You served, you served twenty-five years in town manager.
Twenty-two, twenty-two years in Wyndham and
Yeah, yeah.
Four years as town administrator and finance director and sometimes administrator.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm a former elected in the neighboring town in Freeport, so I was a councilman there for five years. So Tony and I do these workshops together, cause I've got the elected perspective, he's got the town manager perspective. And this is like a team effort here, right, with all the folks in Durham here that are kind of working together, both at the staff side and the select board. So we have fun doing these workshops with our member cities and towns. Um, Durham is a city in town, or one of our number towns amongst our cities. We have, um, twenty-nine of them and, oh yeah, that's us. Hopefully we don't look too much older in person. Um, if you go to the next slide, this is just very briefly for those of you who are kind of new to ask, you know, we serve twenty-nine cities and towns and three different counties. And you, as our members, guide our work. So Joe and, um, Jerry have been involved in different places where decisions are being made about the region. Um, really, our overall purpose is to help you do together what you can't do alone. And we have lots of roles, we do land use planning, we also program and allocate close to like a hundred million dollars a year in transportation funding. We also are the federally designated economic development district, so we plan for economic development in the area. And, and, uh, Jeremy, George and Tony and I just had a really good conversation about that earlier this week, about what can happen in Durham. So our mission is very simple though at the bottom, which is that we strengthen our communities, so Durham. And we also connect you across the region to build a good future for all of our residents. So that's who we are. And the next slide, if you go to it, is.
Yeah, I'm not doing it.
Oh, you're not doing it, okay.
No, I'm.
Oh, you are doing it.
Yeah. The stuff that was on the screen was not me.
This will just take like two minutes for me to say, just, um, you participate in one of our programs which saves a lot of money, Tony runs it. So you cooperatively purchase with your other neighbors to try and save money on a bunch of different products. We also provide tailored services, um, I worked with you recently on your municipal facilities, you know, town planning. In the past, I've worked with you on comprehensive planning, um, so we can do, you know, different kinds of things for Durham. You are networked into the full region, so Jerry is a regular participant and the convening of all the managers together. We also have the planners, George gets together with technical development. We have chairs in a circle, Joe's been there, Josh, have you been? You haven't been yet, okay, where we have our chairs and our vice chairs that can talk about the big issues that your town's faced. This year's focus has really been on property taxes. And Joe is now serving on a property tax advocacy working group. Um, we also do, we offer one facilitated workshop, just like this one, per year that's included in your membership to be on anything that you want that's gonna help you function better. Uh, whether it's saying your annual priorities or technicalism responsibilities, working out issues with your budget committee, whatever it is. Um, and then advocacy, we are advocating in Augusta and increasingly in Washington on behalf of our region to make sure we can bring in money. Okay, so that's just who we are, so you have a little bit of background. For tonight's agenda, and I'm, we're gonna first just get down to your goals, cause I wanna make sure we're tailoring this to what you need. Uh, then we'll go through your form of government, the roles and responsibilities of the select board and the town manager. Then we'll do some, um, habits about how your select board can be really high functioning. And as we go through the discussion, we'll take down some next steps and any action items. Out of last year's, uh, you decided that you really needed some bylaws to help govern yourselves. And you've adopted those this last year, so that's an example of a next step that you can take after the workshop. Any questions on just the overall flow of the agenda? We're hoping to modify it, you know, best based on like what your questions or your thoughts or the issues that you wanna really grapple with and talk through. Good?
Good.
Good, thumbs up? Okay, so we'll move to the next one, which is what your goals are for tonight. And, um, in preparation for this, Tony and I met with Joe and we met with Jerry just to get a little bit of a sense of what are some of the things that you wanna talk about. So that's why we have the form of government and some best practices as select board members. But for you, I just wanna open it up to all of you, what are some of the things that you hope at the end of the night we've accomplished today? Clarification on things, things that you wanna understand more about how you operate or issues you wanna make sure are addressed as we go through the workshop.
I'll open it to those, you two first, since you're getting this for the first time, Josh and I already took the tests, so.
Yeah, I just know, but I.
You still have expectations of what you're gonna accomplish tonight.
Yeah, sorry, I, I have no expect, I just wanna hear more and, cause I don't really know what to expect. So I'm just along for the ride. Okay, great, book pipe in. Yes, oh, they. Cause they trust me, I will, I will. Alright, great, alright, great.
This isn't a shy board.
Yes, I know, I know.
What a.
Um, I'm hoping that tonight's content includes some type of like best practices of how the select board communicates and interacts with the community.
Yes.
When we receive, when the select board receives an email, like what, what's the best practices of how boards respond and how we respond as citizens.
Great, do you have issues of, not issues, but do you have like, um, you get emails, you probably get comments when you're in the grocery store or at Ballfield. I know Jerry has walked in sometimes with constituents of yours. Um, do you also have people that are ready to show up for public comment?
Um, I wouldn't say regularly.
Okay.
But, we get maybe once a month an email from somebody.
Okay. Okay.
Whether it's a complaint or.
So it's not a high volume?
No, no, we don't, we, it's more like some communities where it's, there's like the same folks come in every meetings and like sort of comments are like that.
Okay. It's more of a process. Yeah. You don't have that?
No.
Right now.
Yeah, we don't really have any problematic issues, I'm just.
No.
Just curious process.
The communication style of, uh, best practices for me.
Do you, do you also mean like communication to, to the town, to the community in terms of getting the word out, is that also what you're trying to?
Um, yes, but more specifically when residents, you know, raise their concern and, uh.
Yep. Got it.
Um.
We can cover both.
Yeah, what, what I think would be really helpful for us to understand tonight and also cause, would you know, we do get like sometimes two hundred viewers on our, on this too for municipality our size, I think that's great.
Yep. Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Um, like, I know the core ten of tonight's talk is like roles and responsibilities. And I think what would be really helpful is for everyone to leave understanding just very much like what, how the town manager select, elected select board form of government functions. I think that sometimes members of the public try to draw analogies between council and elected mayor
Yep.
and, and town manager or, or select board and administrator.
Yep.
And like that difference between, um, how they function and what the roles and responsibilities are. Cause I know as individual council members representing a, 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 um, geographic area within your town is very different than us all serving at large over the whole town. So I think that sometimes it's hard for all of us, both on the board and the town office and in the town to just know what is, how is that different than my CEO or my mayor or my boss or my councilperson or my, uh, select person or my senator, you know, it just, it's, it doesn't feel like it's, there's a perfect analogy.
Right.
And so I think that helping us understand that and coming here, yeah, yeah, know that too.
Yeah, and they're different forms, yeah, they're different forms, and so we can talk a little bit about the form of Durham's just.
Yeah.
Alright, Josh and Jerry?
I guess efficiency would be something that I would want to.
Efficiency in what?
Meetings, uh, getting things done, and that's one thing.
But, but big topic sort of that we, so I'll just chime in.
Yeah, but which one, which one was the one that really?
The communication has been something I think recently, uh, uh, I think efficiency is another topic. I mean, I also was hoping for sort of best practices, uh, in how does all pan out before, um, uh, um, you know, in, in, in sort of getting a message out.
Yep.
I don't, I don't know if that's really.
It's increasingly, it's something that towns really haven't thought was a core part of their work for many years. But now with social media and also with kind of the decline in local press, it's becoming something that many towns are struggling with, Josh.
It's, it's one of those things, you know, recently someone who I think had partial information.
Yep.
And then, you know, you know, then there are other things out there, you know, how do we get, you know, we don't, we don't know who's saying it, well, so we can't get there at the beginning, we hear it at the end when half the town already knows and.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's missing part.
Believes it, but, right.
Right, your point about local news media, like, they're, the, the one, once a year someone writes an article about us and it's our budget passed or, or, and here's what it is. Whereas like, you know, Deb just, the other day sent me an article that was about, um, written, a local news article that came from like one, uh, from, uh, Thompson. It was like someone watched their meeting and wrote an article about their meeting and put out like information, it was like, no one does that.
Yeah, and you're, and you're, you should have, uh.
I'm not saying it's necessarily I want like the press corps in here for meetings, but like.
Yeah. Well, I think we have all of this in our slides so far and we can just dig in on some of the things that you've, um.
Can I just, like, I'm more as like as a manager perspective is
Yeah. Yes.
Understanding that the needs and want and the staff to provide it.
Say that one more time.
The, the, the needs and wants that we wanna do and the, the staff and the ability and the funding to be able to provide that.
Yes, and staff capacity, right?
But, yes, yes.
Yeah, and we'll talk a little bit about that on goal setting, about how to pick goals that are achievable and stay focused so you don't overburden, cause things will come up during the year, right? You know, overburden staff because then your first goals could fall not complete because you gotta do something else, right, Joe's doing something else. Okay, I think, I think we're good, I think we'll go right into the form of government in Durham and what it means. Okay, great. And Tony's gonna start from here.
So, yeah, local governments may come in different shapes and sizes. But they all do pretty much the same thing, um, responsibilities for cities and towns across the state really are more or less the same. It's a function of scale and things that some communities choose to do, that other communities don't choose to do. Uh, but when it comes to the form of government, um, you have, uh, mayor, council. You have, uh, council manager, council manager, managerial town meeting. You have select board, uh, the town meeting, select board administrator, town meeting, select board manager. So there are a lot of variations, but it's all about, uh, who handles, um, the responsibilities as legislative body, as governing body and as the administrative apparatus of, uh, the community. Um, for a city, take four, on this example, it's handy, it's close. Um, the council is the legislative body for almost everything. And the legislative body makes laws and its policy, adopts the budget, approves, uh, bonds. Some things the city by its charter or by the council's choice sends out to referendum. Select board here can do the same thing. Town councils in towns with charters can often do the same thing. Um, they function as legislative body, but some things are still reserved to the voters. Electing the municipal officers and other municipal officials that are elected is always done by the voters, uh, at the polls. Uh, we'll, we'll get into that a little bit more. Um, but it is important for people to understand, uh, what some of the differences are among communities and that the way Freeport operates is not the same way necessarily that Durham operates. You do some of the same things, but how those things get done will differ. Because Freeport's town council has some of the legislative authority that was printed in Durham and places like Durham are reserved to the voters, usually assembled at town meeting, like approval of the annual budget. In Freeport, the council can do that, here, town meeting does that. Uh, when it comes to the general operations of the town in towns that have not adopted a home rule charter and have not adopted the provisions of the town manager plan under Title 30A, the select board, uh, is responsible for running things. Where, um, they've adopted the town manager plan or have a home rule charter that is a, um, council manager charter. The manager is responsible for operating, uh, all of the departments and functions of the town except it's might be otherwise defined in the, the charter. Durham doesn't have one, we've adopted the town manager plan. The select board is the governing body. Uh, you do all of the things that are listed in statute for municipal officers. When you read through a statute that says municipal officers here, that means you, uh, the select board. In Portland, it means the city council, and in town of Wyndham, where I worked, it's the town council. The manager is responsible for the oversight and administration of the town and work for the city and working for the council or select board in this case. Um, you've had this form of government for the last four years, uh, Jerry's been here for what, three years?
Yep.
Yeah, so this is still relatively new, uh, and I suspect that there are some, um, patterns and some habits about the way, you know, Durham operated in the past that did continue to linger um, and that, um, may need to change, may not need to change, uh, about the way things are done. But you have a very distinct, uh, delineation of responsibilities in statute about who's responsible for what. So, uh, again, voters, uh, and town meeting, uh, act as the legislative body. When they come together, uh, as an assembly, that's, you know, town meeting, and you just had one of these, that's a photo from our recent, uh, town meeting. I'm not sure if it's your most recent one, I think it might be. Uh, but anytime you have, um, the voters act on things at the polls, you still issue a warrant. It's still a town meeting in a strict legal sense. Uh, but it calls the voters instead of to an assembly, it calls them to the polls to act on the question or questions. Uh, either spine depends on what the subject matter is, some things, uh, may be required to be acted on, uh, at the polls. Others can be acted on, uh, at town meeting. The voters also elect the municipal officers, um, the, in this case, uh, the select board and, I'm sorry, is the town clerk elected?
No.
You're appointed, okay. In communities where the town or city clerk is elected, they're also considered, um, a municipal officer, they're not part of the governing body. Uh, but they're also elected by the voters. There are differences among, uh, communities. Uh, but in general, there's this, um, uh, separation of duties, separation of powers, if you will, uh, between the legislative, uh, the, um, the governing body and, um, management or administrative apparatus of the town. Um, town meeting, um, approves the annual budget, uh, here and adoptions and amends, uh, ordinances and plans. The select board, what's familiar?
Oh.
Um, proposes, uh, a budget for approval by town meeting. You appoint the town manager and other officials about policies, bylaws, and you act only as a body. Your only, your only employee is the town manager. Everybody else works for the town manager. Um, your, um, interface with the administrative structure, the, uh, town employees is through the town manager. Um, the town manager is responsible for, um, working with the select board, helping you govern the town, advising you and being answerable to you for, um, the operation of the town adherence to statutes, adherence to policies, plans and so forth. Um, and I mean, as a former town manager, of course, I'd, I'd say it this way, but I like to think of the manager and the select board or council as, uh, partners. Um, you can think of it as a team and there are times when it really doesn't work that way. But, um, they're partners, I think in a true sense, in governing and running the municipality, the city, the town. Uh, because the manager can't make the policy, um, and can make certain decisions. Um, and the select board or council can, and the select board provides direction to the manager and staff for getting things done. So there's a give and take, there's a, a degree of partnership and teamwork that needs, uh, to happen. So, uh, again, town manager, that may, you may look familiar. Uh, proposes a budget for review by the select board, I know you have, uh, a budget committee that was established close to a hundred years ago. Um, but the town manager's responsibility is to prepare a budget for you to review um, and is responsible for, uh, hiring and appointing members, um, to do the work of the town. Carries out bylaws, ordinances and so forth, serves as chief executive and administrator of the town. And again, um, is your interface with, uh, the town, uh, administrative structure. Uh, if there's an issue, uh, first place you go with respect to a department or an office is the town manager.
Can I just say one quick thing about that? Because it, one of the hard learnings for me when I became a counselor is that I run on a platform, right? I go into my doors, I learn things that people wanted me to do, one of them was to try to do a senior property tax relief. So when I was elected, I went to the town manager and said, hey, I really wanna do this. And the town manager said, you gotta get the body to direct me, right? So as an individual, I can't direct the town manager, right? Only as a body can you direct the town manager, right, and it needs to usually be a vote.
And that's, um, a good reminder of, you know, an earlier point about the select board is you are a collective decision-making body. That individually you have no authority, I mean, being elected to the select board is an important job. And, you know, you are, uh, and I'm sure, you know, Jerry feels the same way, that you are an important voice for him to hear uh, and part of hearing from the community. So it's important for him to hear from you as individuals as well as a board. But when it comes to taking, uh, official actions, setting, uh, priorities and directions, those need to come, uh, from the board as a whole. Uh, Jerry and I were talking one time and, you know, just reflecting on my experience, um, in the manager or administrator's role. Um, particularly manager's role where I had specific legal authority, is that my relationship with individual board members is important, I need to be able to work with them, I need to be able to understand them. We need to be able to have some kind of, um, healthy working relationship, not necessarily always agree, god knows. Um, but to be able to listen to each other and understand each other and have us each respect, uh, each other's roles. So I'd have counselors come to me and say, you know, your constituent's got, hey, 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 this, this, that, the other thing going on. As a manager, it's not all black and white, there's still gray, there's room for discretion. If you have a constituent that has a problem, um, I can help sort out whether there's anything, you know, I or we as the town can do about it. And, you know, if I can, I'm gonna try to help, help you help solve that constituent's issue. Uh, but if that runs counter to board direction or a specific policy or ordinance or something like that, I'm gonna have to say, I'm sorry, that's, you know, if I'm, I'm sympathetic, I hear what you're saying. But if I don't have the authority to do that, I really can't. So you, you may come away from the discussion not liking the outcome, but you can at least respect where, in this case, where Jerry would be coming from.
I'll share just an example from my own experience, I had a constituent who was really mad that the snowplow trucks seemed to be created for bushes, right? And so I went to the town manager and I said, can you do anything about this, can you at least explain like what the issue is? So the town manager talked to the public works director and then I got official explanation. And actually the public works director volunteered to go and tell her how the machinery worked and tell her that actually her bushes were on public property, right, they were burnt away. So that, that happened. Another example in the same exact area is I had many people in the neighborhood said, we really wanna put a state, a, a ta, a speed table on. You guys might know where Southbury Port Village is, there are two speed tables, right? My husband calls them Christina's bumps, because I tried to work with the council to actually help them figure out whether we could do that or not. So that was like a proposal that I brought to the council. The council said, okay, we'll install the speed tables and the town manager then executed it. So just examples of like different levels of public and what's been done.
Right, and, and working through the process. So you had a constituent come to you with an issue, you brought it to the board, the board acted on it and gave direction to the manager.
Yeah.
That's textbook of how it should happen. Um, and of, of course, you know, when it comes to, um, public works and snowplows, uh, they always dump all the snow and they're dry. So, um, yeah. Um, so to summarize and let me know if any of this, you know, comes either A as a surprise, as a surprise to you or B is, no, that's absolutely not the way things work. So voters elect the select board, town meeting approves, uh, the budget and the town meeting, of course, is made up of voters. Uh, select board hires and oversees the managers, sets the agenda, priorities and direction, proposes a budget to town meeting for approval. Town manager is responsible to the select board, hires and oversees staff, contributes to agenda, priorities, direction, policies, makes recommendations as your advisor or sounding board, um, and proposes an annual budget that should reflect the select board's priorities and his assessment of the town's needs for your review. And that's, um, okay.
Sounds about right.
How do, how do towns use budget committees?
Hey, Jerry's.
Yeah, I mean, like what's a common layout you see with a select board, town manager, town?
Um, well, first of all, budget committees are not required by law and there's very little, um, said in state law about them. In fact, the only thing that I could find in Title 30A, I forget the exact section, is that. is that if a community has a budget committee, a warrant article has to carry their recommendation uh on or for any appropriation, so you know, if if you propose a budget, if the select board proposes a budget that includes a million dollars for the fire department, I didn't look at your budget, I don't know what your fire department budget is. Um the budget committee, because you have one, because it was established by voter uh town meeting and has never been um unestablished, disestablished. Um they have a role in making a recommendation on that proposal. That's it, that's the only authority they have. Um different communities that have budget committees work with them different ways, some are elected, some are appointed. Um and again, their responsibility is to make recommendations and this is typically for communities that still operate with town meeting. You tend not to find these in communities with town councils or city councils. What you'll find there instead are council subcommittees um that are usually called finance committees.
Composed of the electeds here that do a little bit of extra work, that's how it works in Freeport.
Members of. Yes. Yes. Yes, and a lot of communities are like that where, you know, the town or city council may have subcommittees, maybe finance subcommittee, a an ordinance subcommittee, uh whatever, you name it, they can have other uh committees and it's not unusual for those communities' uh councils on getting a proposal for something to refer it to the ordinance committee or to refer it to the finance committee for review and recommendation. So then the committee goes off and does it work, does it work, sends their recommendation back and then the council reviews the recommendation, accepts it or not and acts on whatever they find.
So just to clarify with what you're saying, in terms of town councils that have the subcommittees, generally, members of the town council are on those subcommittees and they're part in decision-making within the subcommittees to bring it back to the council.
Yes.
Do you see that in terms of with towns that have, I mean, I guess with select boards? Is that, do you see neighboring towns similar to Durham that are in that situation?
Um.
Are you asking, do we see select boards in towns that have subcommittees with the select board?
Right.
They can, um it depends again on the community, the size of the select board. Um you know, with a five-member board, you're more likely to see that than with a three-member board, because you know, three members, pretty much everybody's supposed to do everything. Um I think with town meeting, select board towns, whether they have a town manager or not, if they have advisory committees, um they will generally not uh be composed entirely of board members. There might be a board member uh liaison to say a conservation committee or a recreation committee. And the the select board could still say, we'd like to have the recreation committee review this report back to us. You can do that, their advisory committee, they're not making final decisions, you are.
So is that.
So in your in your case, right, so in your case, you have a separate budget committee that's separate from what you do. We don't have very many towns in our region that have that setup, right?
Are we the only ones?
Uh I think there's one other, is that right?
Um.
Oh, maybe not.
Does Harrison have an elected budget?
I mean. Harrison Harrison is strong on it with this because they've had um, and I don't know where they landed. They decided to put a committee together that I think was composed partly of select board members and partly of members of the public. They wanted to have more of a watchdog approach to the budget. And so they they they're in, I don't know if they've actually created it, last time we were there, they were in discussion about whether they wanted to create it.
All right, I think Raymond has an elected budget committee.
So you have those three on this too?
No.
Oh, or three or two, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it can set up a not great dynamic, right? Because the select board is working with the staff and with constituents to figure out what the priorities are. And if the budget committee doesn't have the same information and isn't responsible in the same way to kind of being the employer that keeps staff and retains it, right? Because this select board is actually an employer and you have like a responsibility to try to attract good talent, obtain talent, make sure your staff stays around. So you have like some different pieces of your job that may not be reflected in what the budget committee sees as its job. And so that can set up conflict sometimes, you know, between the select board and the and the budget committee.
It could be useful to have um, you know, perspectives, um you know, outside staff, outside the uh the select board. Um but remembering that, you know, you're the ones who are responsible for delivering on a budget and responsible for administering it. Whereas um a a budget committee um may weigh in, but they don't have any responsibility for it once it's adopted.
Yeah, you have to make sure that the town functions.
Yeah.
Right.
Got it.
So that that part I think is often forgotten. Um but my my question, and I know there there's no number, uh not suggesting we do this, but you know, our town meetings are not particularly well-attended, as I assume a lot are, although there are some, I think, in Anshoa County that get a good turnout. Um what are the pros and cons of our system as opposed to a system like Freeport's? It it seems like we get the same, maybe ten people. Uh the a lot of them are the budget committee or other people who are in involved, but then everybody else is there for really a cause, whether it be an ordinance change or or a department. What are the pros and cons? Because and I'll and I'll tell you, I came to the first town meeting when I moved to Durham and I stopped coming because uh I said, what the hell did I get myself into? They just said, we're not gonna fix the roads. And I said, I said, I'm not a genius, uh but I went to my father, who at the time I worked with and was on a number of boards in Freeport when when I was growing up there, and said, hey, I'm not a rocket scientist, but this is gonna cost us more money in the long term, isn't it? Yes, uh and I said, I said, you know, if I could figure that out, why why is this? Uh and and so public participation is important to, I think, all of us. Uh and you know, again, I'm not advocating for this, but thinking of ways to get more public participation, we're not getting it at a town meeting. But if we say, if we switch forms of government and make people come to us, uh I don't think we're gonna have another meeting uh where we don't have public comment, especially around budget time. And is that a better way to get public input? I mean, I don't necessarily think it is, but I guess this goes back to my, how do we get people more involved? Uh and that's been, you know, this is uh the first year of my second term and I think that's been a theme throughout. It's the same people on the committees that that we appoint. Uh I mean, half of our committees, I think, are from from one road or or, you know, maybe three roads in the same neighborhood. Pros and cons, I guess, would be my question of.
Yeah, it's it's hard, I mean, understanding how your local government works and learning enough to make good decisions takes time. And it's way more time than, you know, the the average citizen, the average resident should ever reasonably be expected uh to invest, so yeah, I think in a um in a council form, so as a select board, you're responsible for making a lot of the decisions for the community, but it's still um the voters, either at the polls or at town meeting, that make the biggest decisions. In a council form, you're electing the people who make the decisions. You're choosing people to be more deeply engaged with issues, to more fully understand what the implications are of decisions. And yeah, they should be communicating those to everyone in the ways they can understand and giving people access to the process so that when they make decisions, they're hearing from as broad a cross-section of the community as they can to help inform their decisions. To me, that's the biggest difference. When you have a town meeting, select board uh and or a town meeting, select board manager uh fun uh form, uh you're still reserving a lot of the biggest decisions to the voters who don't necessarily have the time and who aren't going to be as engaged with the issues. You can be as engaged with the issues as any council or anywhere, but if you're not the ones making the decision, you're less sure of the outcome and uh it means that you can put all that that time, effort and energy into it and still uh end up with um not a very good uh decision. I'm not saying that the form doesn't work, it works all over the state, it works, it's particularly um a form that we see a lot in New England and the Northeast, once you move out of the Northeast, it's not very common. Um but for me, the the council manager uh form uh vesting all or nearly all of the legislative authority in the council means you're electing people to make those decisions and then you get to hold them accountable at the polls for the decisions they make.
So I'll just add that, you know, the town meeting form of government is like the most direct democracy that we've gotten in the United States, right? So there's this historic way that we govern ourselves that involves everyone. The problem is that not everyone comes, not everybody takes the time to be informed. And sometimes certain groups will organize for turnout, right? Now, you can have the same thing that happens with locally elected counselors, right? You can have certain constituencies or a certain person who's really gifted at campaigning, never does their homework and makes bad decisions. So you've got risk in either form of government. And you know, the best thing that you can do is to try to communicate as best you can to your constituents, you know, through official channels, but also through your, the way you talk with people about why it's important to show up to town meeting and why it's important for the town meeting to represent a wide cross-section of the listener, right? Because that what you don't want is a subgroup of a community to either be represented on council only or represented at the town meeting because, but hopefully our election system balances out, because once that happens, and we've been, both Tony and I have been around long enough, we see the cycles. If you get something that's skewed too far one way, a lot of people run for select board or show up at the town meeting the next time. So you've got these cycles, the the best thing you can do is to try even and out with public education. Not an easy thing to do, it's very hard to reach people, I should know.
Well, and and let's face it, you know, local government is far more complex than it was, you know, a hundred or two hundred years ago.
Yes.
So a- again, I think it's unreasonable to expect, um you know, the average citizen or voter and this is in no way a criticism of these people, they're all knowledgeable and functioning and can be, you know, experts in their area. But if you don't know how things work, how things are supposed to work, the legal constraints that cities and towns operate within or are supposed to operate within, you could really get yourself in a lot of trouble. Um and it's hard to make good decisions that way. So I think we've summarized the 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 form of government, is there anything?
I just have, back to budget committee.
Yeah.
Um so in towns that have elected budget committee, I'm guessing those towns usually have some sort of charter or something that's been approved by that legislative body that outlines the roles and responsibilities of that budget committee?
The ones that I'm aware of uh that have uh elected budget committees are usually established by uh ordinance. So there's there's some language that defines what the responsibilities of budget committee are. Um maybe a little bit about how the process works that um, because this this is done through ordinance, okay? Um this is uh becomes then part of the uh apparatus of of local government. So if you have an ordinance that says um that um upon submission of a budget by the town manager to the select board, uh the town manager's recommendation should also be forwarded to the budget committee. The ordinance could say that.
That would be at the home level, right, like you'd have your own.
You could write your own one way, yeah.
Whereas what's what you're saying, my understanding is now when we read section thirty eight, it's when it says town manager, we know what that means, when it says uh what uh town officials, we know what that means. The only place it says budget committee is if you have one, they have to comment on the warrant article.
That's all it says.
So if you don't have something at the local level that lays out what they're supposed to do, at minimum, you just have to have them comment on things that the warrant, that's, yeah.
At minimum, you can hand them a copy of the warrant, a copy of uh the proposed budget that the select board has adopted and say, you're an elected budget committee, you have a responsibility under law to make a recommendation on these proposals, there you go. Anything after that is, you know, uh it's precedent, it's practice, it's.
Yeah.
Uh if you don't have uh an ordinance, um you know, it's all based on, you know, what's happened before, what's been achieved in places.
Yeah, just some things we're learning with our like town guiding document is that it has language in there that precedes us moving to a town manager, town uh or select board, form of government. And so there's certain things that we're going through now and with the codification saying like, well, we have a town manager now, so actually the town manager does that and then we're fixing it up. And so if we, what I'm getting at is we don't have that reference of section thirty eight has a section called budget committees and tells you what it is, it's it's kind of just.
I'd have to double check, but I'm pretty sure.
I didn't find it either, so.
I think it's just one subsection that says that if a municipality has a budget committee, the budget committee's recommendation has to appear on the warrant.
And it doesn't actually say how the reason, the municipality has to constitute the budget committee.
It does not. It does not.
Yeah. I mean, you have latitude there through your town meeting, your town meeting could make those changes if you wanted to make any structural changes to how they're funded.
Yeah, I mean, the the town could um, I don't know, I'm suggesting this, I'm just hypothetically saying, you know, the the town could uh or the voters could vote on an ordinance, which obviously would have to be written somewhere, um that would um establish uh a budget committee that would succeed or or supersede the existing budget committee um and then lay out what the process would be.
And the select board would has the authority to recommend a ordinance to the town meeting.
Yeah.
So you could draft that. So you know, barring any structural changes, just knowing the very, very little bit, I know about your process here. You know, you could also work in partnership with the budget committee to design a process where they have more understanding of the information that you have. So as they're thinking about what they wanted to recommend on different things, they have the benefit of understanding from staff's perspective. This is what we spent last year, this is, these are the select board's priorities for how we're gonna spend money this year, this is how much it's gonna cost. So that they're not just looking at it in a vacuum, right? So you could imagine some joint workshops or things like that to try to bring them and you closer together as you get towards town meeting. So it's just a kind of like interim practical suggestion about trying to reduce any kind of conflict or or different sets of information that different groups may be working with.
So you can have some flexibility when it comes to what uh the proper role uh of the finance committee should be or excuse me, the budget committee should be for the town to draw the futures to continue having one. You can do that through the ordinance process, uh however you choose uh to navigate that.
Have other towns disbanded their financial committees?
Their budget committees, um none that I'm specifically aware of, uh but again, not every community has them, so I don't know if maybe they had one that's one in the past and did away with it. Um so I don't know.
Great, I'll just share one other thing is that in Freeport, the way that the budget process worked was just different because we didn't have a budget committee, but we did have a subcommittee of the council that worked on the finance and really got into, okay, where are the comparables for the town manager salary and where are the comparables for benefits around? And so that that those people really had a lot of data that they were working with and then they would come to the council and recommend things. But all those workshops were open to the public and we often had people from the public that then had more information so that they would share their comments to the town council level on the budget. So the budget was really shaped by constituents, right? Which is part of the point, is to make sure that the process isn't so insular, that it's only the town manager and select board working together, that it's permeable to public input and priorities, right? And you can do that in different ways.
So you're, I think you're four years into this uh transition, different form of government, some things that are still similar. Town meeting, select board, manager's different, you had an administrator before, manager's uh role is uh different, has specific legal authority and responsibility, administrator only has the authority and responsibility. Administrator only has the authority and responsibility that the select board gives them. I've been involved.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and I will tell you that
And so that's the kind of the big difference there is that there is a
Yeah.
authority written in thirty eight that says what the town manager does, whereas an administrator is really just like
Yeah.
Whatever it's like.
And the select board is much more in the weeds with the administrator, right?
Yeah.
Depends.
Can be, right, it depends.
Depends. Yeah, it depends very much on, it depends even more um on the board and the individuals and uh the practice because there is no legal framework uh for the office of administrator like there is in the manager. So I'm I'm gonna play timekeeper. Um uh because one of the things we'll talk about is the things we're doing and time management. I mean, this is some really good um discussion.
We did this Q and A already, yeah.
And yes, we did. So moving on uh to remove the habits of highly effective select boards.
Yeah, so now what, of course, you've been elected, how are you gonna spend your time? How are you gonna get things done well? How are you gonna do them efficiently as several of you talked about? And how do you wanna work together as a select board and as a select board plus the town manager? So we're gonna talk about some highly effective habits. Um I'm gonna take the first four and Tony's gonna take the last six. So the first thing is for you to basically do your homework. You need to know, you, all of you know about your community. You may not know about every aspect of your community, like you may represent certain types of people in your community. I always um encourage you to try to reject people you don't know and get different perspectives so that you understand the whole community and you can really represent all people who live around. Understand how the town works, some of the departments are. And a good way to understanding how the town works is to really understand the budget. And um budget can be kind of a complicated thing to understand and one of the things that Jerry works on is trying to explain it to you in ways that it makes sense. But one of your big roles, and we'll talk about this in a moment, is that you need to set the priorities. What is it that you want the budget to accomplish during the next year? And this is something that many, many governing boards skip over. They just look at last year's budget and they inflate it by inflation or they say, oh, but we gotta start saving for a fire truck or something like that. But you should actually start with some bigger questions about like, where is Durham going? What does it need in the next year? What are your major priorities? There's gonna be a whole bunch of stuff that you can't really do much about in the budget. Paving roads is a good one, Josh, you wanna keep on top of like paving the roads otherwise it is gonna cost you more in the future. But there may be something like the town facilities study that we just did, you may wanna take some action on that as a priority. You may have a few other things like that that you wanna think about. And then your budget should reflect those priorities. And that's your role is to tell Jerry, here are the four things that we want the budget to accomplish. Make sure when you give us the draft budget, it does that thing.
So so an example like last year's, uh we realized that we need more HR services in town. And so when Jerry started the budgeting process, we said, bring us a plan that addresses HR services
Yep.
up to possibly including hiring a new employee.
Yep.
And Jerry came back with a budget and I found a contractor who will do it. So that's kind of that, you know.
Yes. Exactly, exactly. And you know, Jerry also should share with you his priorities and his perspective.
He told us we needed HR services.
Yeah, so Jerry's, you know, Jerry's the expert, he's your, he's your guy that can give you the information that you need. But you may also be hearing things from your constituents, so this is where it's a partnership, right? Like Jerry knows what's needed in order to run the town. You have a sense of where the town is heading and what your constituents want. You bring those together when you set your annual priorities and then you ask Jerry to reflect those annual priorities in the budget. So as a new counselor, new select board member, you wanna understand what the past budgets did, like what did they accomplish? Um which is a different question than saying like how much should be spent on fire truck, right? Um and there's a lot to learn, so I would just encourage you to be curious, to ask questions. Your staff is your resource, you should be regularly talking with Jerry and getting information. And be open to hearing things that you might think contradict your your uh preconceptions, right? Because there's a lot of information that's running in town. The second one is, and Tony talked about this before, you all ran as individuals, but then once you were elected, now you're part of a board and that board makes the decisions together. You don't have any authority to direct the town by yourself or to direct Jerry by yourself. You have to do that together. And so the relationships that you form with one another are really important so that you can understand one another's priorities and then help accomplish them together.
What what I would add to that, when we say cooperate doesn't mean you always have to agree. You don't. You're four, should be five, uh individuals with your different histories, your different backgrounds, your different views, values, and so on. Where you come together as a board is where you bring those to the table and put those to work with your understanding of the community, how it works, what the community, what the community members value uh to make decisions. Unanimity is not required, um and there are going to be times when it's not possible. Is it fine to have unanimous vote? Absolutely. Is it fine to have a split vote? Absolutely. As long as those positions are honestly held uh informed by, you know, good uh information. Uh people can have, you know, different assessments and different views of the information, but um you can still make a decision um that reflects, you know, your understanding of the community's values, um you know, through your own lens. They do not have to be unanimous votes, but it is important for people to understand where their elected officials are coming from. I know one of the criticisms I've heard many times is that well, the council voted, well, the select board voted, I don't know why. Um so it's it's helpful as you're discussing issues and making decisions without prolonging the discussion, simply to say, here's my decision, here's why. And I'm going to vote yes or I'm going to vote no. Uh unanimity is not required, um but have the discussions you need to and cooperate on getting the information and getting to the point of making the decision.
Yeah, the only other thing I'd say about cooperation is that uh and I don't perceive you guys have a problem with this at all, but to be listening to one another because you might hear something that changes your point of view or allows you to get collectively to a more creative solution, right? Alright, so the next thing is um being prepared. It is really important for you to understand things before you come to this table because one of the things I've seen a lot is somebody will not really understand the issue very well or didn't ask the town manager before for clarification and it's like, oh, I think I need to study this more or I'd like more information on this issue. And that leads to a fairly inefficient process over time, right? So I recommend that you make sure you read your agendas. Make sure if you have certain questions that you just like aren't understanding it or you are gonna need some more data, that you tell Jerry in advance so he can get it prepared for the meeting. That will help all of you actually make a decision and not have to like table it till you get more information later. So um the last thing is that you, if it's a controversial thing, you may wanna talk to different people in the community just to get other perspectives so that when you come to the table, you also have those voices in your head and you're representing those people. And I would also say like being a select board member, it takes time. Um most of you have full-time jobs, right? All of you?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, I did too, when I was up with and it's, you know, it's it's something where you gotta treat it a little bit like a part-time job and make sure that you're calm and prepared to the table. And everybody else will appreciate when you're prepared and you will appreciate everybody else being prepared and you're gonna save Jerry a lot of aggravation because he will already been able to give you what you needed, you know, to help make that decision.
Well, one thing I'd uh add with respect to being uh prepared and, you know, having questions uh that can also help the board, and I I did this uh as manager um in Wyndham, not to begin with, but as you know, years went on, we figured out how to make our meetings uh better, they're not perfect. Um is if I got a question from a counselor uh about an issue that's on the agenda, asking for information about something related to that, I took that request and I provided the information to every member of the board, not just to the one who requested it. So you know, if you want the last ten years of X I S tax receipts, I'm gonna give it to everybody, uh not just one. So everybody's armed with the same uh information, everybody's prepared with the same information, not to
Yeah, and I I think Jerry would do this naturally, but we've seen places where any of the information was like only shared with a couple people or kind of hoarded and that just needs to break down trust. So having everybody have the same information is really a great way to proceed.
I think it's a two-way street though for us as board members too, like if I know I'm gonna talk about a topic and so I went and pulled the last four permits related to that topic and reviewed them all and I'm gonna come here and everyone else is ready, then all of a sudden I'm like, hey, I don't know if you all look at these four years with the permits, but this, that then sets back the clock on everybody because they're like, well.
That's right.
I didn't, so I think it's important for us too, it's like rather than being like, it's at the meeting then I'm gonna reveal that I found all this information that I wanna share.
Yeah.
I know we're not discussing things on online, but we can say, here are things I'm gonna bring up at the meeting
Yeah, make sure.
and I review in prep for this, so.
Yeah, as long as you don't start a discussion, right?
Yeah.
Right, so
As long as you don't start a discussion, but like I know like in the past I might be like, I'm gonna bring this up at the meeting, here here's the document I'm referring to. Obviously, if it doesn't pertain to executive session or anything like that, like
No surprises is a really good way to think about it. I mean, nobody wants any surprises at a meeting and the more that you already have reviewed what's on the agenda, that's another day.
Well, that's true, I guess candy, I mean, that's a good surprise.
Yeah, no, nobody
I brought extra, right? Candy's a good surprise.
Nobody, nobody likes being sandbagged in a public meeting. Um and you don't really wanna be that person and you don't wanna put Jerry in this position either asking, well, why don't I have this information and having somebody have to say, yeah, it's actually it's on page thirty five.
Yeah, nobody likes that, right?
Yeah.
And and again, this also like helps Jerry, right? Like you wanna make sure Jerry sticks around, you wanna make sure your staff sticks around, make sure that he feels like you're being fair to him by asking the information far enough in advance that he's able to get it and figure out, you know, wanting more for the community and he's able to prepare for you.
Um can we talk a moment about the seeking out community input on the statistics?
Yeah.
So if we have an agenda item that
Yep.
warrants, you know, comment from the or seeking out
Yep.
you know, you don't wanna just seek out, people you know or your community members.
Right.
Um is it acceptable for a board member to make a Facebook post seeking out information on the non we we don't write to the Durham page, but we do have a community page with three thousand members or something and can get pretty active there, but I always struggle with that part about like where's the line of
Yeah.
I'm a select board member and how how do you, how are we seeking out community input besides just having maybe community members come to the public comment?
Yeah. I mean, when I, when I wrote that in the slide, I was kind of thinking that it, you know, you might have a conversation with people that you see at Ball Field or whatever and ask for somebody's input that you might not hear from normally. But I think you could use social media that way, you're just gonna have to be careful that you don't slant it yourself, right? So it may be something that each of you post on each of your page, you even posted on the Durham page saying we'd like your your opinion on this issue, right? We we did that for the facilities study, for example. We actively put out a survey
Act it out, right?
Right, we asked for people to provide input in different ways, we have different meetings, so it's always a good thing to get input, um you just need to do it in a way that it doesn't feel like you're trying to like organize opposition or something like that, you don't have to use your best judgment on that.
It can be a slippery slope, there's no question about it.
Yes, yeah, can be.
I think we've done really well in pulling the community op, you know, requesting community input on big topics and getting more people involved. I just think from a personal perspective as a board member.
Yeah, I mean, you're responsible to the people that voted for you, right? You're an independent person who has every right in the world to ask your constituents for information and to share information with your constituents. It's more difficult in this moment of social media because you can see we've seen elected officials, you know, throughout the region who kind of use it as a platform for creating um misinformation or divisiveness, right? And hey, we've got the First Amendment in the United States, you can do that. But as a habit of a highly select, yeah, of a of a high-functioning select board, you know, you should hold yourself to a high standard as you're communicating with the public, make sure it's factual. Make sure you're not doing it in a way that's like, I mean, you can communicate your position after a vote also to say, I voted this way because, right? Because you are elected directly by the voters. But you know, I think a lot of it's in tone, you know, no personal attacks, make sure you're factual, that kind of thing.
Well, just to uh like touch on the word community and community input, it was a question earlier about different forms of government and understanding where in some communities um counselors might represent specific uh wards or districts or areas uh in their community and are elected only by the voters within those defined geographic areas. Durham's not like that. Any town uh in Maine uh that has a select board uh form of government, everybody on the board is elected at large. Uh so your perspective uh can vary and the community you seek input from primarily if if you're a district representative or you're, you know, ward four um will be the people who voted for you, who elected you. Uh but if you're elected at large, like this elect board, like uh sometimes um members of a council, there'll be so many that are elected by district or ward and others who are elected at large. In Wyndham, for example, was a kind of a unique arrangement where there are four geographic areas from which counselors have to be elected, but everybody votes for them. Now, I live in the south area, but I get to vote on um the north area, the west area, and the east area, all of those. So it's a way of providing geographic balance without being uh solely focused on your district. There may be other communities that do that, I'm not aware of any, but it it kind of is a hybrid between uh at-large and uh district or board representation. Sorry, give me a little bit.
Uh the last one is just the eth one open, which is kind of obvious, right? And I know all of you will try to do that. It's just that sometimes there are conflicts that you may not necessarily perceive, you just have to be very careful about making sure that there's nothing there that's gonna actually benefit you or you don't, you're not passing an ordinance that would benefit your particular property. You know, so just to make sure you recuse yourself if there's something that seems like it could could raise a conflict of interest for you.
We haven't had this issue, so I always hate coming up with hypotheticals because it makes me sound like I'm like worried about it, but like have there been scenarios where you see boards where individuals might not be be recusing themselves?
Yeah.
But other board members might be like I mean, Josh might be like, man, Joe really has a lot at stake here and he's not recusing himself, does does it become a time where it's appropriate where Josh might say, I think, Joe, you might wanna recuse yourself from this vote, like
Yeah.
and do you
Uh you would.
Yeah, no, I know you would, but like, do you think that there's a in in that, in the in the whole kind of two-year cooperative and not wanting to sandbag people like I have thick skin, I'm fine with being told that, but like, is there a better way to go about it if you have that concern, like
Oh, yeah, it's constantly a warpath, right?
in the private before or, yeah.
I mean, much better, it's like if you guys are trying to cooperate, then again, no surprises, right? You you would call Joe and say, hey, I don't think I'm, and this is part of doing your homework, right? You would wanna read the agenda before and then you'd be like thinking about it say, hey, Joe, I don't think you ought to refuse yourself, and then you could either make the case that you don't think so or not. But then in the meeting, you know, if you felt strongly about it, Josh, you could call for you to recuse yourself and then there's a vote. And and um can he vote on a refusal by helping out, right? Have to have to look at rules, but the rest of the select board members would vote on whether you needed to recuse yourself. So it's it's on you to declare it, but it's also on everybody else to provide a check on each other.
But you know, I'd also say that most of the time, the ethical boundaries will be clear, but there will be times when it's really not, and I think it's perfectly fine um for you to have discussions as um individuals, you know, say, I'm not really sure what the priorities are here. Uh or if you think someone else may have a potential conflict or the appearance of a conflict is just to to have that discussion with them.
I think that's like a good one for that, it's like when you're dealing with land use ordinance or stuff like that, like everyone in here owns land that will vote, so no one's immune. But whether you like own land that's subject to a, within an area that might be under tension. So no one's immune, but whether you like own land that's subject to a, within an area that might be in a technical zone or something.
Take a contact zone, right, on your property would be a good example, yeah.
Right, so it's like, you know, we all chime in on things, like we're all taxpayers, so everything we talk about here has an impact on us, but there's like a line there.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no conflict.
And it seems like there's kind of like a self policing.
Well, it's a difference between uh something that is of general applicability or specific applicability.
Yeah.
If it applies specifically to.
There's an ordinance against wildlife biologists in Durham, then I'm gonna probably have to pull myself out of it.
I see what you want, yeah. All right.
Okay, great, so we'll move on to the next one.
So Christina already talked about uh the importance of uh establishing uh priorities in a budget. And uh I don't know if you knew this before you were elected to the select board or before you decided to run, uh but sitting in those chairs is a lot about money. Uh, there's a lot about running a town, running a city that is about money, it's about financial management, it's about budget management. Um, some of it can be really eye-watering or mind-numbing depending on your preference. Um, but following the money and understanding how the town's finances work at least at a basic level is really important. Understanding where the money comes from, understanding where the money goes, what the town's responsibilities are for, you know, assessment and collection of property taxes, um, what state revenues are, what things you're required to do, uh and what you have to spend money on, all that's important. Um, where Christina said that it's important uh for you to um set priorities in the budget. What I will do is I will say um that the budget is all about priorities. I mean, there's some stuff that, that you have to do with, uh but a budget, and then this, this has stuck with me uh since an undergraduate budgeting course at the University of Maine. It's the best working definition of a budget I've ever heard in my life. A budget is a plan for what you intend to do expressed in terms of dollars and cents. So first and foremost, it's a plan, it's an expression of what you intend to do, it's about your priorities, it's what you intend to accomplish over the next year typically. Um, if you adopted a capital uh plan and capital budget comes with that, you know, it can expand it in multi-year. But generally, um, the budget is the best way of articulating your priorities and uh you on behalf of the community, the community's priorities for what you want to accomplish during the year. And that becomes the roadmap for Jerry or anybody else who sits in the manager's seat. Uh, so understanding what your priorities are and reflecting those in the budget is of vital importance. And I, I can tell you that there are far too many communities that don't get this right. Um, that it is about, um, that it's about the dollars first and what you're doing with them second. Yes, you wanna control the amount of spending, you don't wanna, you don't wanna use, you know, more precious uh public resources than you have to to accomplish the town's priorities. But in order to know that, you've gotta know what your priorities are. And then you can put yourself in the position of balancing those priorities against what the level of spending is that people are comfortable with, you think is responsible. Um, but it's, it's important to understand first what it is you're trying to accomplish. Starting with, um, oh, I, I wanted zero tax increases, I can't tell you how many times I've heard that.
Oh.
Um, only to have to ask, but what do you mean by zero tax increase, zero on it?
And what do you?
Let me zero on it tax rate, uh what do you mean?
And what do you wanna cut? Cause inflation, right? So I mean, one thing, you, you might have a goal, many towns have a goal, maybe a goal of keeping the tax rate stable, right? And some places will say, well, we're only gonna, we're gonna have a zero percent or we're gonna have a hit for two point one percent or whatever it is. But you're kind of picking this number out of the air without understanding what it means in terms of what you can do. So for example, if you want a zero percent, you might start with, okay, we've decided that our, I'm making this up, rec department is not that important. We're gonna cut the rec, rec department and that's gonna enable us to keep the tax rate stable or lower, you know? But you, you can't really start with the, it's gotta be zero percent because there's stuff that's gonna have to give on something like that. So you have to decide that you, it'd be better to start earlier and say, okay, of these things that we fund, we need to figure out how we're gonna cut it because our goal is to cut taxes for our, for our residents.
Well, what I can tell you also from a manager's perspective, being given a direction like that means the board is essentially abdicating its responsibility, its role in budgeting and priority management, because it puts the manager in a position of saying, okay, what am I gonna cut? I don't know what my board's priorities are, I might try to, you know, suss it out by, you know, by knowledge of the individuals or, you know, what I've heard at uh board meetings, but I really don't know and you're putting them in a position of coming to you with a budget that includes a, a bunch of cuts. It's like, there's no way I can support this, wouldn't give any direction.
Well, I think that definitely goes against the, the van, the cooperation, you know, it's like.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We, if we want to develop a budget that, that does a vision, we don't just tell Jerry.
Right.
And bring us a budget for next year and it's like, well, what do you want in that? Like, we might say, bring us a budget that keeps the lights on and nothing else, like that's a different conversation.
Yeah, well.
Well, he has, he doesn't hear that from just me, well, in fact, the, the board says, bring us a budget like this, you know?
He has to hear from the board. Exactly, and, and you, and you have a responsibility to provide that direction to Jerry before he goes and puts a ton of work into creating a budget.
Yes. Which is not a good use of town resources. And you're, you're exactly right, you know, if you, you go back to uh the, you know, cooperating, um, it's cooperation among uh members of the board, it's also cooperation and going back to, you know, what I was saying about the partnership between the select board and the manager to get things done.
And I'll just do like a little bit in here about your budget committee, that if you are going to try and bring your budget committee along with the information you have, you want to engage them very, very early upfront on that goal setting, you know, the priority setting for your budget. Because only from there would they understand why Jerry's gonna put together what he's gonna put together and you're gonna recommend what you're gonna recommend.
So, um, the, the, the next, uh, the next, uh, best practice for newly elected official, for really any elected official, is to promise responsibly. It's, it's easy and, you know, you pretty much everyone who's ever run for uh public office has certain things they want to accomplish, they might have, um, you know, they might have, you know, one burning issue and, you know, they, they promise to make all this change, we're gonna bring uh Durham, forget about the twenty-first century, we're gonna bring Durham to the twenty-second century. Well, okay, maybe that's appealing to you and you might vote for that person, but that one person has no authority to do that on their own. And it sets their supporters up for disappointment and failure could be uh detrimental to uh the operations of the board. What I think you can and should uh promise responsibly is to make good decisions, to listen and to um uphold the, the values of the community, where you find those, you find those in, you know, the comprehensive plan, you find those by, you know, listening to uh neighbors, find them by, you know, people, sometimes, uh, you know, social media, sometimes, not always. Um, but you find it by listening to uh other people, but it's, it's careful, it, it, it's, uh, you wanna be careful about making promises because as one member of the board, you don't have sole ability to keep those promises. You can promise to try and to work as hard as you can to make something happen, but that's really all you can promise. Meetings matter, um, what you say, do, how you behave, uh, meetings matters, people watch, people pay attention. Um, and how you conduct yourself uh is a model for other people when they come here, how they treat you, how they treat the staff, how they treat each other. Um, and the more they see you treating each other and Jerry and staff and the public with respect, the more that becomes a norm uh for the community. Maybe that's not an issue uh here, um, communities go through cycles, I've seen uh times when communities go through a really hard time and there's this, you know, real, you know, headbutting in public and it just gets nasty and ugly and nobody likes that. Uh, but as the elected representatives, the more you model good behavior, the more you encourage that uh from others. I also don't wanna say something you'll regret later.
To lose me.
Yeah.
Um, so there are times when you may be called upon to act in a quasi-judicial capacity and what that means is, you know, like a judge, Josh knows that. Um, and you have to remain impartial. Uh, if you've got, uh, I don't know if this would be a situation, say, you've got uh, uh, an application before you for, um, uh quarrying or sand pit or something, uh, and that's an application that comes before uh the select board, it's not usual. Um, you should be really careful about expressing any opinion about that. You know, you're down at, um, you're at whatever local coffee shop there is or whatever place people gather to talk about uh town stuff. Uh, people will say, wow, what do you think about this application for so-and-so's, you know, gravel there? It's an application before the select board, you can't talk about it. Uh, because as soon as you say anything about it, it can prejudice uh your role on the board and your ability to make an impartial uh decision. Uh, so there are times when you're going to be at, you're gonna be acting, not just asked to, but you're gonna be acting in a capacity on uh an application, a, a hearing of, you know, some kind of an appeal, uh, and you have to really be careful to remain uh impartial. It's important, we talked about um the roles, responsibilities and relationships, it's important to honor those boundaries. Uh, the select board has by law certain functions, um, the town manager by law has certain functions. And each of you needs to respect those functions and work within uh the system. Uh, I, I would tell, you know, the councilors that I work for that I would jealously guard their role, that, that there was not going to be anything done that required council authority done by anybody else. Um, and likewise, I expected that if there was something that the manager needed to do, that it would come to me. Uh, and if I needed to go into a department or something like that, I would do that. Um, and that's uh abiding by, uh, the law that's abiding by the decision of the voters who established the town manager plan in Durham, that's respecting and honoring your role as the select board, you're the governing body. You're the four, four or five people uh who have been chosen uh by your fellow voters to make certain decisions on their behalf. That's your job. Uh, your job is also to hire, oversee and give direction to the town manager and through them staff. You should do that. Um, and Jerry should take direction from the board, provide you with input, you know, as, as appropriate and um report back to you on how things are going.
One, one thing I'll just say about that is that, um, your focus is on policy and priorities, it's not on managing Jerry's staff or managing how Jerry does something that you directed him to do, right? So you wanna make sure that you're preserving your time and not being overly prescriptive in telling Jerry, okay, write this letter this way or, you know, fix this pothole with this kind of asphalt, right? And you're gonna say to him, please communicate our general sentiment on this or please make sure that these potholes, you know, are, you know, part of the overall plan for your, you know, street maintenance or whatever it is. You, you just wanna make sure you don't stay in the weeds, right? Because you have precious time and you wanna, you wanna stay at that kind of strategy level and you want Jerry to be at the execution level. Does that make sense? And save everybody time and heartache.
Well, and it's, it's also easy to get into the details because that's something a lot of us don't understand. You know, we, we grasp the details better than, you know, the abstract, big picture policy stuff. Um, and that can be really hard, um, but I really encourage you, as, as Christina said, to stick with, you know, kind of the high level, what's, you know, what's, what's good for Durham, whether, you know, whether the guest wifi uh platform is on the left side or the right side of the whiteboard, who cares? You know, it's there, we've made people uh aware that there is guest wifi available, who cares?
I remember one particular workshop I was in with my fellow counselors, we literally spent twenty minutes talking about whether the planner should have a five hundred dollar travel budget or a thousand dollars. Twenty minutes of seven people's time to figure out something like that, right? And instead it should be, our, our goal is that the planner has professional development opportunities. Manager can figure out, like, if that's five hundred or a thousand, right? I mean, and it's just such a wasted time to be incredible like that.
Well, is it, you know, a four drawer file cabinet or a five drawer file cabinet? Do people still use file cabinets? Anyway, um, the, the final uh best practice for newly elected or really any uh elected official, and it's always useful to revisit these, um, because you may forget some of them and you need to be reminded of them occasionally, how do I, I need to, you know, do better at this. Um, is to be resourceful, uh, it's easy, you know, to be in your foxhole and think you're the only ones dealing with these issues and, you know, how are we, are we gonna deal with this particular issue? Uh, talk to your colleagues in North Yarmouth, talk to select board members in North Yarmouth, talk to councilors in Freeport. I would encourage you to go to a municipal association, um, training from time to time, talk with your fellow elected officials from other parts of the region, other parts of the state. Absolutely come to our meetings, uh, come to our events and it is a good place, you know, our, our, um, it's a good place to talk with, uh, people, good opportunity to talk with people. Our annual summit at the end of May, for example, um, is, yes, our annual business meeting, we approve the budget by law and amendments and that stuff. Um, but really what it's about is bringing people together and giving people nuggets of information or, or, you know, micro topics that they can talk about. Uh, and we give people time to do that, uh, to network, to talk with each other and say, hey, you said you're doing this in, in your community, I wanna know more about that. And we actually have heard uh from uh board members in um various communities who say, there was somebody who talked about this thing, I'd like to know more about that thing, can you connect us? And we absolutely do that. Um, so reach out to officials in other towns, uh, take advantage, is Durham an MMA member?
Yes.
You are. Um, and we, we're not their competitor. Uh, MMA does a great job of things at a state level. Um, what we do is we focus on our region, there's some overlap in what we do and we try to coordinate on some things. Uh, we try not to duplicate some things unless, you know, we feel there's really uh a need to focus on specific needs of uh our members. But MMA is a great resource, they have a ton of information about their, their legal library, their, um, um, legal memos, notes, the Municipal Officers Manual, if you don't have a copy, uh, you can get one, uh, you can download one, you don't have to print it out, you know, it's like, I don't know, five hundred pages. Anyway, it's a great resource. I would be careful though not to read it and then expect to apply it verbatim, I've had people try to do that, but it's a great learning tool. Uh, and please, as I, I had somebody made me promise when I was, um, gonna be, you know, taking office in another organization, not to go it alone. You can't do it alone, um, not any one of you as members of the select board and not even the select board here, only within the confines of Durham. There's a wealth of knowledge out there, take a think of it.
Okay, so your turn, what did you hear in these ten best practices that you think you could apply to yourselves? Are there things that you've heard that you could improve on? Are there things where you feel, okay, where you could improve or where the board can improve?
I've heard from Jerry before, you know, asking those questions ahead of time, this conversation he and I have had.
Yeah.
I think I need to make, uh, listen to all of this. Me personally, I think I need to make more connections, I need to spend time with Jerry, which I don't do.
Yeah.
Um, and I also think it would be helpful for me to learn more about. Um, and I also think it would be helpful for me to learn more about the town, the businesses in the town. I went to the open house at the historic, oh, the building. I thought it said maybe we should all try to go or whatever, but I went there and he introduced myself as a select board member to a number of people. And I think maybe that would be good for me to do more now than try to.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I was thinking, this is, this is recorded. So it would be good for, to go back and just kind of listen to it again if we. If we can use this stuff.
We'll give you the slides too, yeah.
It would be good, the next new board member should, I think should listen to this immediately. I mean, these slides are really good.
It's hard to know what the job is when you're elected. Right?
Yeah.
There's no, yeah, did, any of you get a job description?
No, no. It's, it's, it's hard, yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
And maybe even when we put in papers to run for the board, some that should come back. Or maybe that I can't remember, but, you know, what are the key? I think that's always an issue, I'm on some other volunteer type really new committees and I, you know, to add value to a board, to a group of people for some, reaching some common goal. I mean, everyone has a different skill set, but you do need to hone up on some things. And I, I do not understand the details of the budget like I want to. Rather than I've heard this, I mean, I've got the gist of it, but I would like to, you know, understand it better over time.
Hear more about that.
Great. I mean, really good, good information.
So, um, I agree. I think I don't know a lot. I mean, I know the town, but I just don't put myself out there. And I think that that's a very, knowing your inner circle of constituents versus the town of constituents is a huge difference. And I need to do that. I also, I've met with Jerry and I would like to continue and meet more with Jerry because I still am a newbie and, um, I'm learning, but I still don't know what the hell I'm doing. Cause I'm learning, yeah. Getting there. I, I think your first year for me, like, I was just kind of like, it was like a fire hose and I felt insecure taking votes because I wasn't sure about things. Like, it takes a while to get up to speed, so have patience with yourself about it too. You know, and Jerry is such a brilliant resource for me.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, um, one thing that our board can do better is like giving Jerry direction rather than us bringing a topic up for discussion, us all kind of discussing it and then moving on and it's not really like, what's the action item there? And I think that like, myself included, like, not, like, speaking to Jerry one on one is like, oh, hey, this is what we need done, can you, can you make sure this gets done before next meeting? It's like, the more I've learned about this is it's really nothing, like, no board member should ever say that to the town manager, can you make sure this gets done next meeting or can you do this? It's like, we turn to the board and say, should we have Jerry do, do, do this for next meeting? I think so, let's have a vote, like, can you come back to us with this plan?
Yeah.
Um, and I think that that's something that we can, we can do better, myself included, really, uh, there.
That's great, Joe, I'm just gonna build on that for a second, cause your staff is a scarce resource.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So you need to make sure that you as a board are figuring out how best to use your limited staff time.
Mm-hmm. Um, and then like in vein of cooperation, one thing as the chair, I think I can do better is help communicate with individual board members more. I think that sometimes to take for granted what might be known, like what I think is known or, or because I'm done this already or had a conversation with Jerry that I forget that, you know, it wasn't had at the meeting and I can do a better job of like communicating, like, here's our objective in this meeting rather than just like a line that says discuss X, Y, and Z. Like, here's what we're hoping to accomplish. That's part of that cooperation, so everyone feels more prepared, you know?
That's great, that's great. You guys are a reflective bunch. That's great. Jerry, what do you think?
I think, you know, given the complexity of local government, I, I gotta be a little bit patient, I think, with the elected offices. Because running local government is hard, right? I mean, Tony and I went to University of Maine, this is like a discipline that we studied in college and I can't imagine just a resident wanting to come in, run government without that same kind of training and education that we had had, so I'm gonna just be a little, little more patient with their ability to, you know, understand. There's a lot that goes on in that town office and if you don't work in that town office, you, you wouldn't know, right? So I just gotta be a little bit more communicative, I think, about what, what does go on in there. Staff is certainly, I'm finding out, cause they're all in too, they're doing a super job. So just, just be a little bit more communicative, I think. I think if they come see me a little bit more, that will help spark that too, you know? Cause one, it's, it's difficult to answer these questions that come off the cuff, if you will, and I'm not necessarily prepared for them because, so talking about that sort of stuff ahead of time would be extremely helpful. So, yeah.
I think one thing too, we always say for granted with town, like, meetings and these sorts of things, like catching people off guard, off the cuff is like, so much of municipal government is done like after people already worked an entire workday. And it's like, you know, there's days I know where Josh has been up since five AM and had been in court all day or Rebecca, you've been busy all day or Deb's been all over doing all these sorts of things and it's like, sometimes we're just like tired by the time we get here. And so when it's like, hey, do you have this ready? And it's like, you open your mouth to say yes, and then it's like, well, I've already worked twelve hours, hit the gym, fed my pigs and done my chores, I don't remember what I was gonna say. I think, I, I did prepare, but I just am not ready and like, that's where like, I am really bad.
All, all of you here, like, worked a full day already. And then you're in the evening meeting. It's, it's like, it's like an endurance thing, you know, actually.
Yeah, and I know one thing for me, I'm really bad about like, just like carrying, like, beating a subject to death at a meeting. And it's like, we, like, sometimes it's just gonna be like, oh, you know what? We, our meetings matter, we should make sure we're putting ourselves in a position where we're not tired and exhausted because Joe's gone on for forty minutes about a topic that needs two minutes of addressing, you know?
How, how long do your meetings typically go?
We have them, supposed to end at nine.
Yep.
We, over fifty percent of the time extend them.
So they go on a little long.
Nine, well.
And you just said.
You're not avoiding budget season.
Well, I guess, yeah, I've worked on it off of a heavy lift, but, um, we've been pretty good, but like.
So you just said, cause Joe will go on for forty minutes. Do you guys have trouble like being concise when you're talking with each other?
I, I feel like we, I feel like we just try.
It's a, it's a different topic.
Yeah.
I guess the topic, so, yeah. And I also feel like it's because sometimes we're trying to do too, are trying to do too much where it's like, I remember last year when we reevaluated the, um, the fee schedule and the concept that we were gonna dis- discuss every single fee in one meeting. And it's like, we're halfway through the third meeting, still discussing the thing that was one of four things I had put on the budget, I mean, on the, on the agenda for the night in the planning.
Did it warrant that much discussion with the staff?
Oh, it hadn't been addressed in like a decade, so it warranted a lot of discussion, but it should've been the only thing on the agenda, not the fourth, starting at, yeah.
Yeah, to, to get to it. So you had a lot of work doing something like that.
Starting it at eight thirty at night and then being like.
He makes me look good when he's not here because he doesn't put any big topics up there. So that's, we get done.
Yeah.
When you're there.
That's right, so.
Sometimes Josh is like, hey, why don't you take it on?
But I think the next part is actually talking about meetings. You guys ready?
Yeah.
To go into some habits about how you can actually work, this, this is a little bit more nuts and bolts. We're gonna go into a little bit of nuts and bolts, alright? So we're gonna talk about four different areas. One is honoring boundaries, you already talked a little bit about that, but we're gonna go into specific areas, just on one slide. How you can focus on priorities and what you do right now on that and how you can improve that. We'll talk about how you have productive meetings, we'll give you some tips and how you reflect on what works well in your meetings and what doesn't work so well. And then how you can have like, you know, open, healthy communications without resentment, without toxicity built in. Alright, sound okay? Alright, so we're gonna go right into honor of boundaries and, is this me or you?
That's you.
This is me, okay. Alright, so you're, we've already ta- touched on some of these things, so some of this will be reinforcement. But anything that seems unclear, just surface it and pound it out right now. So the first thing is, you're gonna set the priority, you're gonna set what kind of services you're gonna be offering to your residents. So that's the level of service. Are you gonna do, I don't know, are you gonna feed the pigs or are you gonna stack the chairs or not, right? And then what's the overall tax rate? So the manager's role is to, is, he knows a lot about this stuff. He's gonna provide you with advice and input, but you're gonna make the final decisions on those things. And you're gonna set the priorities and have the manager help figure out how to deliver those priorities and he's gonna report back. So there's gonna be a lot of back and forth in there, but ultimately, you're the ones who make the decision on that and the manager is your second floor and your advice giver. You will recommend the budget to the town meeting, but the manager's gonna draft it and then once the town meeting actually approves it, he's the one who actually manages the resources, right? So you're not involved in, after the town meeting sets the budget, you're not involved in saying, okay, precisely on this budget, this is what you need to do, Jerry, he's gonna figure that out after it's adopted. You recommend the ordinances to the town committee, but usually the town manager will help you develop those ordinances. He has access to legal resources, MMA, policy background, so he can help develop it. You guys would tweak it and then recommend it. And then the town, the select board would actually adopt policy, not ordinances, right? So, so right under town meeting, they don't necessarily adopt a policy, but you can. So for example, you adopted your own bylaws for how the select board interacts and I think Jerry, you helped draft them and then the select board adopted that policy. Um, and then your only employee again is the town manager, you appoint the town manager, you also supervise the town manager. So you gotta make sure you do performance reviews, right? You're the, you're the employer. Jerry deserves a conversation every year with you about how he's doing, how you want him to perform. You then also figure out his contract and how you reward his performance. So that's on you, you guys do that, right? You do a performance review every year, right? Um, and then Jerry's job is to do the performance reviews and hire everybody on staff and he's the one who does that. If you have input on staff not performing, you tell Jerry, you don't tell the person directly. He's the supervisor, he's the one who actually oversees that. Alright, questions on this or things that aren't working this way in Durham that need discussion?
I have a question, it's Tony, when we have our meetings every year, you're asking town managers what they're putting up for colas.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Do you know if, are the town managers kind of rec, do you know if the town manager is kind of recommending to the council and boards what they think? Or is the, how, how do you think that works? And how, I mean, does that have any problem with recommending?
Yeah, I, I take that as, you know, a, a data point in putting your budget together. You know, here's what's, here's what's going on around the region and understanding what your own budget issues are, what your challenges are recruiting staff. And, you know, put all that together and, you know, come out with a recommendation. I think our colas here should be, you know, three point seven five percent. So, we, so what, what Jerry's referring to is, um, I along with our county manager convene a group of town managers throughout, southern, town and city managers throughout southern Maine on a monthly basis from September to June. And one of the things we regularly do is ask them what their thinking is for cost of living adjustments going into their budget cycle. And I collect all that, I ship it all out to all the managers so everybody gets to see it. Uh, so that helps inform their decisions in what they propose to their councils so that they know what's, what's going on in our region.
So then, so Jerry's role would be to recommend, he would, he would look at that data and then from that data, he would make a recommendation about what the quota would be in the budget. And then you guys would make the decision on what you wanted to recommend to the town meeting on that, right? So that's basically how that works.
I mean, Jerry may be, you know, thinking as he's beginning to, um, put his thoughts together about the budget for next year that, you know, looking at the budget and looking at all the priorities and understanding, you know, challenges, you know, I'm thinking a, a two percent cost of living adjustment is, is really what would fit best with, you know, everything else. But when you hear from managers throughout the region that maybe it's more like three percent, well, four percent, you know, that could give, you know, Jerry some pause about, you know, is that really the recommendation that, what am I issued? And it can also be information that he shares with you, should be information that he shares with you as he's making his recommendations, you know, I got this information from managers around the region and, you know, we're competing in the same labor market as, you know, Freeport and North Yarmouth and Cumberland and so on and so on. Um, and this is what they're doing. Um, you know, what do we think is right for, for us, for our needs, for our staff and so on.
And do you think that most of the managers are using the Northeast CPI?
A lot of them do, yeah, the CPI, the Northeast, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean.
I mean, one of the things that's challenging for some place like Durham is that you are competing against Freeport, you are competing against Portland and you are also competing against town halls. So like, you know, just because you're a smaller rural town, you still are in this labor market that's been pretty competitive in the last five, ten years.
Especially, yeah.
Yeah, and so that's a challenge that you have as an employer, because you're working in cities.
And, and people are pretty highly mobile too. So, you know, if they're not finding, um, you know, a job opportunity that meets their needs here, but they find one in, you know, the town five miles, ten miles away.
And we've had a lot of town manager turnover in this region, um, like more than I've ever seen in the last couple of years. So that's why.
Lot of retirements, but also some.
Lot of retirements, so it's very competitive now.
Some really tough, um, political environments, um, social media frankly has played a role. Uh, just the, the general coarsening of debate, people just seem really nasty.
Residents are nasty, sometimes, governing boards are against each other's staff.
So.
And unappreciative, you know, and so like, it's a really tough job. I mean, I, I could never actually serve as a town manager, you know, I mean, I don't know about municipal government because there's just so many holes. First of all, you have, and, and also the other thing is that the town, the town management training school that both Tony and Jerry went to is closed down. So now we don't have a steady pipeline of town managers being trained in Maine. So we have kind of shortage and we see more and more people that don't have the backgrounds of Jerry and Tony kind of going into these jobs, which, you know, God bless them for doing it, but it also means that they don't have the same professional background. So folks that have the backgrounds of Tony and Jerry, we have fewer and fewer candidates. I mean, so it's just, it's a challenge.
There, there is still an undergraduate program at University of Maine Augusta, but it's a, a fraction of the size. It's a good program, uh, but it's a fraction of the size that the, the program at ORNO was. Um, you know, it used to be, you couldn't go anywhere in Maine or anywhere in the Northeast. You go to a, uh, International City Management Association, as it was known, uh, conference and you couldn't turn around without bumping into somebody that went through the University of Maine program. And consequently, a lot of, you know, the smaller towns, even mid-sized towns, it may have benefited from, you know, a homegrown cadre of town and city managers who've learned what it is to manage in the public sector, which has some similarities to the private sector, but it's, it's different, it's invisible.
So I only share that with you just so that you understand kind of your role in trying to do staff retention just because we've had a lot of resignations, uh, we've had a lot of retirements in kind of like our Cumberland's case, et cetera. But then we've had a lot of turnover in our rural towns that are closer to Durham. We've lost four.
Christian Nichols.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he's.
And Christian Nichols ran in Bayou.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, um, but, uh, the rest of, but one thing I always, I don't want Durham to be is like the farm team for other, yeah, municipalities because like, I want, I don't want us to be like, oh, yeah, well, if you get a job in Durham for a few years, then you can go down to Cape Elizabeth and get a, get a swankier job or go over Brunswick, so.
I think that's one thing I appreciate, appreciate about your approach, Jerry, is you always have the staff in mind. You know, and you are very open about that. And I, you know, raise this over, just like, we need to. And I, you know, raise this over here, just like, we need to continue to find ways to, you know, support the staff, motivate the staff and reward them for good, good work.
Yeah.
And that's through a salary increase or just different opportunities or training, that type of thing.
And Julian, I'll just say one thing at that point as a manager is that.
Of debt.
Of, oh, debt, that's okay. I'm sorry, correct, god, I'm calling you Julian. Um, yeah, so. Sorry. Um, one of the things that I've learned is that even just the appreciation piece is really important. It's like almost as important as compensation, is when people feel like their work is really appreciated. You know, and I know you do that for your staff is to try and, and you, and you, you should also be appreciating Jerry and his staff as part of your attention, just to correct. The market is, is hard right now. And when you have like, you know, um, I'm trying to think of a big example. Harrison, Harrison's gone through a whole bunch of town manager changes, um, in the last few years and it's been very unstable for a while. And, and like two select board members resigned at the same time, the town manager quit and it was, you know, and so the remaining select.
The term of office staff quit.
Yeah, and then the select board, you know, it was on the remaining select board members to figure out how to find intern town manager. I don't mean to scare the heck out of you, but just so you understand that this had, this can happen. And with a lot of the political toxicity and polarization that's happened, it's really risen in the last decade or so. It's a really, you know, you can get regularly yelled at, you know, by residents or whatever, and it's just like not pleasant. Or you get yelled at on social media and it's not pleasant where, you know, people accuse you of things and nobody's there to defend them. And it's just, you know, it just becomes a really hard, hard job. So. So, okay, priorities, um, some best practices. The first thing is for you to know your roles and I, I'm gonna just go through these other two bullets, but then ask you to talk about how do you do that here in Durham. So it's important to stay on track. You are gonna get pressures and requests and other things that come up during the year that are gonna be, you know, pressured to become part of your priorities and you may want to make those switches. But you also have to realize you have limited resources, money, and you also have limited staff time. So every time you add something in, you gotta think about what's gonna be coming off of your plate. So it is hard to stay on track over a year and it's important for you to kind of keep those goals front and center. And then be intentional if you're gonna change those goals, right? So that you don't end up going at the end of the year, oh, well, we had four goals at the beginning of the year, we ended up with ten goals and we only made like progress on a couple of them. And we weren't intentional about which ones we made progress on and which ones we didn't. Um, you, again, Jerry is the person you're gonna work through in order to advance those priorities. So once you've set them, then you can hold Jerry accountable for accomplishing them. But you can only do that if you don't load up his plate more and more and more, right? So, or you gotta take something off his plate if you're gonna ask him to do something else. So my question to you is, what is your process for setting your priorities, so feed into your budget and also feed into everything?
Um, so this is year two of us kind of working on our new process, which last year was good, not perfect, always room for improvement, I think, you know, and that's where we are having like a steering, like a, a, a meeting where we have asked all of the boards and committees that reports at select board to bring forward two priorities that they're seeing as, in their work, as the most important thing for them.
Yeah. Right.
At the same time, us as board members have already shared what we think is most important from our perspective.
As individuals or as a board?
As individuals to each other.
To each other, okay.
Uh, and so then we're gonna hear from, on July twenty second.
Yep.
We're gonna hear from the boards, committees, and then we'll go into a discussion based off what we're hearing from them, what we've been hearing from Jerry, what we have for goals ourselves.
Right.
Kind of come up with a strategy of what's, what's like, maybe a, not a super high priority, but a really easy lift that a board can just do.
Okay.
Or something that's a really high priority that's gonna involve staff time. Or something that's even longer term, like the goal of doing it down at Visioning Center isn't gonna be a next year thing, you know? So I think we have a process where we're, um, truly better job of setting those up this year. And when we did that last year, we, we saw like the big one was like, what was our fiscal year? Getting H R services, um, addressing uh battery energy storage.
Yeah.
Those are all things that came out of that first goal setting workshop last year that we got done, so.
But what we, what we do need to improve on is how we prioritize them. We should have a workshop where we'd have a tick chart and urgency versus benefit and all this other business.
Yeah.
And we we're not as good as our, I think, in our P R that we should be. Like all those things were goals, you know, we should be able to go to our website and see twenty twenty five goals, check, check, check.
Yeah.
What's this year's? So I think we can hone up on that a bit. And that just does everyone a service, because every resident should be able to go to the Durham website and see, you know,
What it is.
what's our mission, our charter, or, you know, our list of goals and how we're performing to them, you know, per quarter.
Yeah.
I think we can just improve on that.
Do you, could.
No, so thinking about, um, setting, um, goals and priorities, um, you've probably all heard of SMART goals.
Yeah.
Specific, measurable, achievable, um.
Realistic.
Realistic and, um, time bound.
Time bound.
So, uh, the time horizon for a lot of things for Durham, like other towns, like other cities, is, um, the fiscal year. Uh, but you can have goals that extend beyond the fiscal year. Um, the, the thing for the things you can accomplish during the year as well as, um, pieces of multi-year goals. Just to be specific about, when you say we're going to, uh, improve our, improve Durham's roads, well, what does that mean? Let's be specific. Um, you know, there are ways to, uh, evaluate the condition of roads. Let's find out what the condition of our roads, and well, Jerry, we don't talk about this stuff. Um, and, um, you know, how we want to achieve a particular, you know, road quality rating of X within five years.
Yeah.
So having specifics about what it is we're going to try to accomplish when we say we're going to do economic development, what do we need? Um.
And to make sure it gets into your budget.
And you're gonna, you identify those specific things that you're committed to accomplishing during the year. And you build them into, uh, the budget so you can make progress. Uh, I mean, the, the trick here is, uh, your goal-setting session is coming after your budget process. So, um, I don't know if there's an opportunity to think about the, the timing of goal-setting and budget-making and, you know, whether that all makes sense. But have a process for setting goals, setting a serenely manageable number of specific, measurable, achievable, realistic and time-based, uh, goals will serve you well.
We have a little worksheet that we, when we do annual priority setting workshops with our member boards, we use a SMART goal worksheet where everybody tries to draft the, the SMART goal. It's not an easy thing to do, actually, you know, to figure out, okay, like as Tony was talking, like, you know, X number of roads are in X, you know, condition and that's gonna result in spending X amount of money and it'll cover this many miles, right? It's not that easy to get time, it's actually kind of a little bit of a process for you guys to decide on that goal. And then Jerry is gonna have to give you some feedback on how achievable it is, given your public works resources or your pay and budget or whatever it is. But then you, once you adopt them, then you can hold yourselves accountable for it. And you can also show to the voters what you're accomplishing very specifically, which gets to your communications point of, you know? So, anyway, we can share that worksheet so that's the worksheet, yeah, we'll send that over.
Yeah, I agree.
And then you can use it for that. I mean, you're gonna have, how many boards and committees do you have according to one or two goals?
Um, sorry.
One, two.
You nine.
Okay, so you could end up with, and how many priorities did you guys tell each other enough?
Uh, sorry, uh, that was a lot, twelve.
So you had twelve from, twelve committees?
Yes.
Twelve committees.
Okay, say they only each had you one.
Uh huh.
Which that's gonna be really hard to do.
Yeah.
And then each of you had.
Well.
Two committees, yeah.
Okay, alright, so you could have a minimum of like twenty.
Uh huh.
But the board work, the board goals are for them and we
Yeah.
give them the priority that we think they should work on.
Okay.
So it's not, oh, so we're, we're delegating.
You're gonna delegate some.
Yeah, 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 I should be clear with that.
They, it's, it's their goals and then we have our own goals that are sort of tied in.
Like a perfect example, I've already heard from the ag committee, like they're really, their goal and objective is reworking the definition of agriculture in our town ordinance.
Okay, so.
And so they'll work on that and then we will get a, yeah, yeah.
And then you can, it's still gonna take your time, right? So I would just, the only thing I would say is be disciplined
Uh huh.
about not over committing what you can get done, right? Because you wanna, at the end of the year, you're gonna wanna say success, right?
Yeah, and I think we had that this year with the, the fiscal year
Yep.
and the, the battery energy storage and the solar energy ordinance, um, can be taken care of.
That was a big deal. Yep.
And then, um, the, uh, fee schedule and the, um, we also did the, the ordinance change, the land use ordinance, so.
Yeah.
Five pretty.
And the fact that you can just reel it off is actually really a great testament that they were real goals that were accomplished.
Things that, yeah. But. What, what, like where we worked on the delegation there was like, the planning board was taking the lead on the ordinance change, but they're handing the, uh, uh, some of the work off to the conservation commission. So the conservation commission was working on some of the aspects. So we were kind of getting a really well-handled out rough draft. And then like things that we needed to hear from those boards too is like, well, we're still expecting to have to manage our applications for subdivisions and stuff like that and our planner is part-time. So, you know, having that conversation with Jerry was like, between subdivisions and this, the planner doesn't have time for anything else. And so anything you have that requires a planner, no, you know, so it's helping us, I guess.
Okay, just, okay, so let's go on to the next one. Um.
But I like your idea that it should just a little split right down.
So now I want you just to kind of talk each of you about what you think is going really well with the meetings right now and what is going as well with your staff work.
I think what's going really well is the new system we have for the, um, the agenda. Makes it really easy to prepare, because everything's linked in there and we, um, can see what's going on. I think that making adjustments like what you s- suggested last time, Deb, of the upcoming meeting, I think that's already going well, because we see what the upcoming meetings are. Um, I think for the most part folks are coming prepared for the meetings too. And where I think we can improve is just some of the time, timeline stuff, and that's on me too, so.
Alright, others? Josh?
I think we have new discussions. Sometimes they go a little long, especially from I like you. That's me.
True.
Yes. Josh was.
Well, no, but Josh can say it all.
I can hear.
Oh, especially, I mean, you know.
We're here for a reason, it's a one.
These, these turn into long days for me, especially like, it seems to me every Tuesday we have a meeting, like tonight, I gotta go home and do more work after.
For your regular job, yeah.
Right, uh, I was there all day today.
Yeah.
Run home, make dinner for, not the pig, but my kid.
Yeah.
Uh, it's cold, uh, and, uh.
You're being recorded.
She, she had a whole, it was a whole box of mac and cheese tonight, so.
Yeah, five takes on compare, but basically.
I, I can sympathize, I would work all day at, you know, the town offices, town manager, go home, cook dinner for my family and then go back for counseling at seven o'clock, so.
Right, I mean, it's, it's like, you know, it was like, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get much today, uh, I didn't have breakfast and I snacked while I was making. I mean, that's, and not enough water, and it's just, it's, it's, they, they turned into long days for me.
Yes. Yeah.
And so, especially today when I'm not feeling great, how about this?
And for our staff too, like, you, you too, this, these are almost like twelve, fourteen hour work days for me.
Yeah.
Have a select board step off.
So timing, it sounds like, like finding ways to shorten the time would be helpful.
Yeah. Or, or, or dinner at the meeting, like, but, but yeah.
Yes.
And there's, okay, there's no good solution, I think, but.
Okay.
Being more efficient with our, our time, I think is big. I know that the last couple of weeks we've been smoother and it's been like, I wanna get home at eight, it's like, oh wow.
Get home at eight?
I'm, I'm home at eight, we had a, we had one meeting that was fifty-two minutes, like that's
Oh, that's great.
really a record, but Rebecca's first meeting was almost like three hours. She was like, what did I just say?
I think what goes also well is that the staff really has us prepared. I mean, we did the packet in time, when we come in, ev, you know, everything's set up and ready to go and it's just, uh, we, we seldom, we really seldom have issues with this.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
We, we do get prepared when we get the information.
Yes, yeah.
I will say since I feel like Josh and I have been on the board, Josh has been on a little while, I feel like every year our, our meetings have gotten more productive. And there, that first year where I feel like they got really productive, they got really long, and I feel like we've gotten a little bit better since then. Because we used to have some, uh, like short meetings, but we didn't always do a ton.
Yeah.
And, you know, with, with, with some, sometimes, so it's like, you know.
Yeah. I mean, this sounds pretty good. I'm gonna go over a few tips here, but it sounds like you're in pretty good shape, so we'll just go through a few of these. And if any of them s- um, stick out to you, you can count some of them. So one question is just what's your process for developing the agenda? Because the agenda is really what's gonna be the meat of your meeting, right? So here, I've laid out all of your roles. So for the town manager, you know, Jerry's gonna identify the agenda items that need your attention. He'll provide you the background information and analysis, often that comes in the form of a staff report. And then if you want him to, he can make a staff recommendation. Some places they don't want the town manager to make a recommendation, you know, but, you know, often that helps guide you in a good direction. And then he will prepare, you know, write the agenda and post the agenda. Now the chair and the vice chair, we're gonna contribute ideas for what needs to go to the town manager. The town manager's gonna know what are the things that are happening in Durham that need the select board's approval or decisions. You may have ideas from your constituents or from the direction of the town, these are the things that I'd like to see on the agenda. So Josh and Joe ideally will sit down with the town manager ahead of the time. And Jerry will say, these are the agenda items. You guys will ask whatever your questions are, you'll give them whatever advice you think should be, the information that would be in, in the, in the item. And maybe discuss what the recommendation might be. And you can also like add items. Now any one of you that are the select board members, you can also suggest an agenda item, but it should go to, um, the two of you, Joe and Josh. And then you would bring it to Jerry. So this is kind of how it works.
Yeah, it works like this, um, Jerry and I talk almost every day, uh, uh, like, whether it might have to be a text or a brief call.
Yeah. Yep.
Um, and you know, Josh and I communicate by text, it's like, hey, maybe this should be on here or he should be an email saying, hey, maybe this.
Yeah.
So I think we're doing, doing that pretty well.
But do the two of you have some FaceTime with Jerry so that you can get the agenda ready?
I, I don't get a lot, I just, the timing for me is.
Timing's hard for Josh, he usually feeds me that information and then I'll either, oftentimes I'll either have a, a phone call with Jerry
Yep.
a Thursday before, or I'll stop by and meet with Jerry
Okay.
a Thursday before and we'll make sure that we're on the same page for an agenda.
Jerry, what do you need from the select board members to make it easier for you to put the agenda together? Or to get the meeting to run well once the agenda's out?
What I need from them is for me to give them information so they can deal with it during the open meeting rather than me. Like first if there's, like, if there's a letter, I'll give you a, a case in point. Um, like last week there was a, a suggestion to, uh, write a letter to this group and they, they, um, lumped in, uh, another building.
Okay.
That's not really quite ready and rather than say that in an open meeting, I would rather have them come see me so I can say hello. What you asked me to do last week really isn't gonna work in here as well.
So you can work it out a little bit in advance.
Before the meeting, right, so I don't.
Yeah, and then you don't have to have like, you don't have to waste time on it or you don't have to, I mean, what, what I hear you saying is that you didn't wanna like contradict.
Yes. Uh huh. Yes. Right.
Wait, so like what members were saying in, in open meetings?
Right. Exactly.
I have a question about that. So how, how, that's a very fine line and I, I respect that and I completely understand it. You and I have had conversations about that. But then how do we necessarily know what is and isn't on the table to have that discussion? Because it's a, it's a fine line and I, I don't want to put you out, I don't wanna put us out. I wanna everything to be, you know, happy and, but where, where does.
I wanna everything to be, you know, happy and but where where does that kind of, where where do you tie the line?
I think it's okay to have said in that meeting, but if it was, but if I got a visit after that, then I could say, hey, look, we can't really do the Eureka Center because we don't have a budget, we don't have a plan,
Yeah.
we don't even have a town vote, so we really can't ask these folks to do this cause we we don't have the background and the support and I would rather not do that.
Yeah.
And I think what you're trying to be sensitive of Jerry is the perception too because we have an idea, we bring it to Jerry, everyone's, that's a good idea. New information arises, the the what you need to fill out when you file an application, all that. And all of a sudden it's like, oh, this probably won't work. Jerry doesn't wanna come back and say, your guy's idea is stumped, it doesn't work. He's trying to say, hey, with new information, like maybe we need to adjust this, but he's also aware of the perception of the meeting is.
Yeah. Yeah.
The town manager just really put the select board in their place. They they didn't know what's I don't have a target, you know.
Right. Play, piece back this back to like Dev and I were saying, probably have to come and see more and have those conversations so that we know we're better prepared.
I think it comes to like an issue that we did struggle with and I don't really think we prospered in our cars. The action items that come out of the discussions of the select year meeting. Uh, we tried to, you know, a while ago, I was trying to collect things and put it in a Excel file and have like a rolling action list.
Yep.
And then we had trouble like at least connecting those actions to a meeting agenda. You know, making sure that, you know, what we might have expected, maybe for Jerry to come back and talk to us about, because it wasn't really on an action list.
Yeah.
And maybe it got done, but we didn't know what should we have known?
Yeah.
Should we just trust the fact that if we say something out loud at a meeting, it gets accomplished? I mean, that's al- that's always a struggle with all meetings, but we don't have a section that has follow-up from last meeting
Mm-hmm.
with this list of actions. And quite frankly, if we did something like that, it could be just an expectation or a known thing that it's just a progress update
Yeah.
and the progress could be, we can't go execute this idea and for these reasons. I'm I'm a little gray on, you know, what what conversations need to take place
One and one, yeah.
in regard to that outside of the meeting versus, you know, as a follow-up.
Yeah.
But mainly because we don't have a strong action follow-up process, it drives a little bit of grayness in how exactly all that happens.
But does that the town manager's report when he gives that to us?
Yeah, that's where I get a little concerned about the gray area where it's like our act, like it's not like a project manager to Jerry where it's like, alright, here's our action items, Jerry's responsible for X, Y, and Z and then on our list says, but the town planner needs to do this. And then now it's really feels like it's getting out of like our realm. And that's where I'm like, you know, giving Jerry a list where it says, here's everything you and your staff are responsible for, report back weekly on that progress, feels a little bit like.
Yeah. Right. Like active.
Actively.
Right, right, and you know.
Yeah, and that's where it's just it feels different than like a normal, like at work I'll have those all the time, like, hey, this is what's going on.
Um. Right. Yeah.
But here it's like, it's not like, hey, the goal is to develop this budget.
Yeah.
Not, alright, Jerry, please have you have you checked off the pre-budget meeting but checklist, you know.
Yeah. That's kind of like the lead, the leads thing, right? And I'm like, I'm like.
Which is.
That's part of the administrative weeds.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But I think it's one thing where just everyone's from this board is coming at it from like, we wanna be supportive and helpful,
Kind of. Yeah.
but we also understand it's not like, alright, Jerry, here's your checklist, I want a weekly update on how you're proceeding along.
Yeah. Yeah, and you have to.
And I'll say that's what Dev's alluding to, but.
You're also responsible for keeping, you're you're also responsible for um making sure that Jerry is accountable for performance.
Yeah.
So you just gotta make sure that you're not so far that you're micromanaging his time, cause he's got a lot on his plate.
Right.
Right, but if you have, and I don't know what that list looked like, Dev, but like if your list is like, um, I don't know. Make something up, uh, fi- figure out how we're gonna repair the roads for the next fiscal year, right?
Well, for example, the.
Then you might say, part of what the chair would do is say, okay, so we we're, Jerry, is it reasonable for you to come back in February with a report to us on the road repair plan? Is that kind of a good example or what do you think?
No, I would give you something more like, yeah, can you make sure that the public works department replaces the stop sign at the the corner of Rabbit Road and Route nine?
Yeah.
Okay.
But Jerry and Jerry has the town manager's report, so that there have been things that have been addressed that you can come back with responses. So I I personally just assume that's how that was like essentially, it's not a checklist, but that's the checklist. Like you have been reporting back to us in a way.
It depends on how big the item is, I guess is my point, right?
Yeah.
Right, like those are the small things. Right, so if it's like it what Tony was saying, the stop sign, like, ah, God, you know, like you gave, if if the if the board is the whole set, fix the stop sign, you might say, okay, just so you know, I fixed the stop sign. But you really don't wanna be spending more time with that on that, right? Like it's.
I, you know, I think we were at the point of just, you know, ebbs and flows and we had so much going on.
Yeah.
There were so many moving parts that I don't think any one person felt like we had a complete handle on.
Yes.
Are we are we making sure, you know, we're crossing the finish line, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm.
Yeah, well, see, in in some of those things, I see that that is more of something that Jerry develops internally because it's like, we have the big strategic goal.
Right.
And then that more tactical list of, alright, in order for Jerry to deliver us the budget on April first, he knows that the first draft, we wanna see January first. We don't need to make the list that says like, meet with the department heads or, and I'm not saying that, but I and I feel like I feel like we're just
No, not on that, no.
we're learning as a group together on how how those things work. And perfect example like with this this uh situation with like applying for a grant to fix up a couple of buildings. Someone said, I wanna help apply for a grant to fix up like Casigo or whatever. And we said, well, maybe this is an opportunity to add this other building in. So we said, sure, yeah, let's go for that. If we find out more information, it's really not a good fit for adding this other building.
Yeah. Yep.
Jerry and I had that conversation today and my thought process is, well, the report back is, hey, town manager here, town manager report, I met with the person who's filling out that grant grant application, it sounds like adding another building isn't really a good fit. Joe and I talked about it in our pre-meeting.
Yeah.
He said it's probably best to just stick to this, um, so barring any strong opposition, I think we're gonna just go with that one segment. And that's like a really like good way to do it, but like, and that's where it's like, but if I don't go in and meet with Jerry,
Yeah, yeah, that's nice.
Yeah.
now he's sitting there and it's like, seven o'clock at night, everyone's already kind of cranky and he's like, hey, just you know, we're, I'm not gonna be able to do what you guys asked me to do and I was like, oh, Jerry, you know, like, you know.
But I I think too, like, you know, like last week when we sent that letter and you said you wanted to see it before.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that, I don't know, I just.
Yeah, like that's one thing that we don't, we I struggled with too is our board is like, so they're gonna send, someone wants to send out a grant application.
Well, that is a.
Or we're not a grant application or a letter to say, hey, are is your organization interested in helping us fix this building? Is that something our select board should say, okay, we, okay, and that's where I don't know if like, if it comes out from us, if we, you know.
I mean, that's that's where like, he's executing, right? So you give him the direction, we wanna apply for this grant, Jerry applies for the grant, you guys don't have to review all that stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, it was the same thing like we had an RFP go out for um.
Open space.
On the open space planning and it's like, my inclination is like, should we have last eyes on it before it goes out or is it like?
I mean, that's like you, not, in my opinion, you should set the direction of what you want the open space plan to accomplish.
That's. I don't.
Jerry writes the RFP, runs the RFP process, hires the consultant
Mm-hmm.
and then the consultant works with you guys on actually getting your input. It's it it's different parts of it.
Mm-hmm. Now, where would it come to this? I'm not saying this is applicable, but the RFP goes out, one of us reads where it goes out and we go, man, that doesn't really feel like it looks what we were trying to say there. I'm not saying that that happened, that didn't happen, but a lot of.
Well, that, yeah, I mean, if that were to happen, then then I would, you know, hopefully that doesn't happen. If you're giving clear direction and you got a competent town manager, that shouldn't really happen.
Yeah.
So, you know, then then there's a communications issue. Or, you know, I mean, another way you could do it is you could have somebody, you know, one person on the select board that has finalized with, you know, with Jerry on it that, you know, you could appoint something if you really wanted to do that, but.
I mean, I don't think that's necessary, but.
But hopefully that doesn't happen because, I mean, what you're supposed to do is have, you know, you're supposed to set the direction, they're supposed to execute.
The right person, yeah.
So you don't really wanna get into like wordsmithing or even like getting too deep into the so very.
Well, and I think that's really helpful here, cause I do think sometimes what we hear, because our budget, our our model is so new is that there are committee members who expect that that comes from the board, not the town manager. Cause they're like, well, we elected the board, this unelected official is the one who's asking for this project. And it's like, well, we directed him to do that.
Yeah.
And so it's like, from my mind, sometimes it's like, well, it's it says, you know, select board and our signature does that, it takes some heat off. Like and it could just be a little bit getting into the weeds, cause it's like, it's twenty twenty-five, we've had a town manager since twenty twenty-one.
Oh, I see.
Twenty twenty-one was a weird year to begin with and we've gone from fiscal year to eighteen month budget. We have all this sort of stuff, so it's like, we in like every other entity involved in town, like this is the youngest board. Everyone else on the boards has been on longer than the town manager's been a thing, you know, so we just have like this institutional thing. So I'm like, does it take a little heat off of the town manager for saying?
Yeah. You've got a lot of new, don't you? I mean.
Everything's new.
Everything's new.
Yeah, it's new, the staff, town manager.
Josh is, you know, Josh is seasoned veteran with four years of experience.
Yeah, I remember including your board, I think it was, you were on, but you had people that were on the board for twenty or thirty years at that point.
Like.
Yeah, it was just a different board.
Yeah.
Different.
Different, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I would just encourage in the in the spirit of time management, encourage you to not micromanage. And then if you see something that like wasn't how you'd expected, then you have that as a conversation with Jerry and say, hey, this wasn't really what we were expecting and and you try to figure out what what happened. Was it the direction wasn't clear enough, was was, did Jerry need another proofreader, whatever it was, you know, and incorrect you go for.
Well, and a lot, and a lot of times the one we're like looking at takes final eyes anyways. It's like, all we did was make Jerry wait until tomorrow to send it out, because if it shows up, we go, oh yeah, this looks really good.
Yeah.
And it's like, well, I could have sent it out earlier today.
And you don't really wanna have that stuff looking at your agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, like.
This is helpful though, like understanding that.
Yeah. Alright, so in the spirit of managing precious time, we'll go through these really quickly and I think we're getting pretty close to wrapping anyway. So we talked about this before, one way to make meetings go fast is to do your homework ahead of time. If everybody reads their packet, has a lot of the questions answered ahead of time, you already have the data you need from Jerry because you asked those questions, then you can actually make a decision. We, I've sat through many meetings where somebody's like, oh, I didn't have time to think about this or I wanna see this new data, blah blah blah, it gets tabled, it gets tabled, right? And it's just not using people's time effi- efficiently, so to make decisions, you've gotta be prepared. Uh, stay out of the weeds, like we've talked about back before, it's really easy to be in the weeds, as Tony said, because it's very comfortable for most of us to be in the weeds. It's harder to make the bigger decisions, but you can spend a lot of wasted time in the weeds. Similarly, rabbit holes, you gotta go off on a tangent, this is this is what happens a lot. We do this all the time in our meetings, we can all of us go with the rabbit holes. This has been something that's kind of like a universal human trait, I think. We actually like sometimes have bells on our table like rabbit hole and you can call each other on a rabbit hole, right? And I'm try, I'm wrapping my brain to think of a good example of a rabbit hole, but you know, it might be like for the Eureka Center. Well, did the public works manager say that the water flows under it or around it and what's the foundation issue, like, right? Like, no, you don't need to know that, you just need to know that the Eureka Center is gonna be so prepared. So try to stay out of the rabbit hole. Um, be clear on how you take and respond to public comment. I read your bylaws, you already are, you've got three minute, you know, three minute limit. If Joe's chairing, the person says their piece, then the ding ding ding, you know, it's done. You don't engage in back and forth. If there's a big issue that needs to be resolved, you can ask the town manager to respond or to look into it. But um that is, you know, another thing is just to be strict and fair. Everybody should be treated the same way at public comment. Doesn't seem like you've got a lot of that going on right now, right? But that it that could happen at some point.
But that policy came out of uh, that was solving an issue that existed before.
Yes. Yeah.
We have seen examples of uh places where they're not, that where they have rules about public comment, but they don't apply them consistently and that really creates a lot of problems.
And that's why we like to apologize, yeah.
You get really mad, yeah, but you need to treat everybody the same. Um, sharing the air, you guys need to do a good job of listening to each other and and speaking and being concise. So just make sure that not one of you is dominating, you're not taking too much time. If you're staying out of the weeds and the radicals, you'll probably say fewer words, right? And then you can actually get through your meetings faster. And then your job is to keep it really.
Yeah, I will say one thing I think that I do a lot and we all can do a little bit. I feel like sometimes we stay in the weeds because we're comfortable in making a decision, but we feel the need to really explain why, because we'll make a decision and then someone will send an email be like, well, you all didn't even talk about this and prior to this iteration of board, there was this perception of this like behind the iron curtain discussion happening and that's why meetings went so fast, cause we're not being told everything. Where it's like, we're all so in the weeds, we understand that, we're like, yeah, we reviewed the agenda packet, let's vote on it.
Oh, I see, see that picture.
It's like, well, should we read out loud part of this agenda packet just so those people don't think we have some preconceivedness? Like that's where we get, at least I get a little knocked out sometimes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you can, I mean, I know that you might have that public perception, but I think it's fair to say who can house to give Brooklyn these decisions, right? It's like deciding millions of dollars in every meeting, right? And they they can't understand everything and you have to move forward.
Mm-hmm.
So like on a smaller scale here in Durham, you don't wanna discuss everything, it's not a good efficient use of time.
Yeah.
People aren't gonna wanna serve on the select board if you're talking about every meeting, right? So.
The concern for us is always, what's the public perception? And at some point, and how much do they know? And at some point, I think we need to put the burden on them and not us and say, you need to participate.
Yeah.
All this information is available, if you have questions, Jerry's available.
Exactly.
And I think that's.
Yeah.
That's probably the biggest disagreement is me saying, you know, we don't need to do all of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think we got, I I personally have to get better at that, just like, I read the packet, I did my homework, I don't have any questions, looks good.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
And the packet is out there and people in the public have had the opportunity.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, you know, likewise, um, I think, and it's hard again, because, you know, people have lives. Uh, but that's why they elect you, why they elect counselors to do this kind of work, is because they don't have the time. But if they have an issue that they're really concerned about, it's incumbent on them to see what is coming before this white board and say, you know, I'm really concerned about this grant or the application, so I'm going to read the application. I'm gonna read the material, I'm gonna call Joe, I'm gonna call whoever and have the conversation. I'm gonna find out from the town manager board about this and then I might show up at a select board meeting. Um, you know, home rule, local government, um civic engagement, public participation, um takes time. And, you know, you can't just sit back, I mean, you can, people do it all the time. Uh, you can't just sit back and, you know, grouse about things when you don't like the decision, but you don't really understand uh what it's about. It's it's hard.
Mm-hmm.
And uh I think people need to invest some degree of confidence in all of you uh to have done your homework and to make the decisions.
Mm-hmm.
Tony, I think we should skip to number twenty-eight, so we can talk about the communication first.
I agree.
Yeah, I think.
I think so, I think.
From town to the residents, and select board members to us. This is the meeting, this is the last thing we're gonna cover, right?
It's also the.
Yeah, we we do need to have a motion to extend our meeting by.
We're gonna, where did you say by nine?
Well, we'll we'll still have.
Oh, you still have seven?
We just have to just present agenda, so we can just preemptively, say it's a matter of five, is that what proposed?
Okay. Alright, sorry.
Alright, cool.
I'm glad you asked.
Any discussion?
Have.
All in favor? I made a motion, Justin.
Yeah.
This goes back to, you know, meetings matter, your conduct matters, your tone of voice matters, the language you use matters, the way you behave matters. And the more you model good uh behavior in a public context, the more people will see that, the more people will hear that. Does not mean you're always going to agree, and we like Darman, I was saying, come by now, that's doesn't happen. But you'll have the ability to have important discussions about topics that matter in a respectful uh civil way. So be respectful, appreciate each other, even when you don't agree with each other and um, you know, bring the spirit of uh collaboration, you know, team Durham, whatever you wanna call it, uh.
That was that was my addition, I had to put an explanation on it.
Yeah. But uh, you know, we we did some work with um uh the town of Harrison that was um experiencing, you know, with this, the political turmoil, the turnover and select board members, town managers, uh staff. And, you know, they worked hard together, the remaining select board members worked hard to come up with a a positive vision for how they were going to operate and it's very much like this. They actually came up with their own acronym uh for the effort and they got posted in their select board meeting room. Um, so we we talked a little bit earlier about uh communications and the importance of. Uh so, we we talked a little bit earlier about communications and the importance of um communication. A lot of, I mean, what you're doing now, what is good stuff, you're putting stuff out there that's available to people, um you can't make them read it. Um but the more you use the channels you have, the more you use different channels to get information out there, the more you will reach different people. And again, in the official communications of the town, use the same guiding principles that you use talking with each other, dealing with each other, how you conduct uh your meetings and expect uh people to behave uh the same way. You can have um a social media policy uh for um employees uh that's you know, some communities have adopted those, some haven't. I think it may be uh just important to have uh a discussion about what kind of policy fits.
Do you have examples of policies?
There are, uh yeah, many social media policies that are out there. We have one.
Okay, what what is the step we set this down with?
Um you know, then dealing with uh the inevitable uh negative comments, misinformation, uh personal attacks. Uh one of the most effective things you can do is in a, you know, again, just passionate, uh calm, professional, respectful manner, put the record straight. Uh and, you know, put it out there. If, you know, the town has a Facebook page, if you've got uh email newsletter that goes out, um use the tools you have and set the record straight because if you don't, nobody else is going to. You can't rely on anybody else doing that. You all have um constituents, um everybody in town who, well, not even if they're not a voter, if they they live here, if they have a business here. Um you know, they need to be treated with um respect and again, you're you're the elected leaders of the community. Uh you should treat every interaction as an opportunity to model what it means to be a good uh elected official.
Really?
I mean, it just comes from being the good person.
Mm-hmm.
Um be accurate, be factual, don't, you know, speculate or spread misinformation, disinformation because that just um hurts everyone. Um when you do take personal um positions on matters before the town, it's really important to distance yourself from the board. You are one member of the select board. And you can say, you know, um about this issue, um be careful that it's not one of those quasi judicial things where you could compromise your ability to um act impartially. You don't have to be impartial on everything. You have your own opinions, you have your own values. And it's okay to say, as a select board member, I have this opinion about this issue before the town. You can't represent your personal position as a position of the board when in fact the board has not taken uh any position. The the corollary to that is you may have an opinion, a position that's very different than the board when the board takes action on things. You can disagree. Uh but once the board acts, even if you disagree, um you have a responsibility to honor the decision uh of the board, not work to, you know, undermine it or badmouth it or something like that. You can say you disagreed, that's fine, and you can say why you disagreed. Uh but once the decision's made, the decisions may move on, you know, a lot of other things to do and to hang everything on, you know, one issue, what you disagree is um not good for the board and it's not a good way for you as a member of the board to be successful in trying to navigate the issues that are important to you through the board and uh have approved. Um I didn't look at the uh the board bylaws thoroughly, but do you have a code of conduct about uh how the board
No, our our bylaws just pertained like how we operate our media
Yeah.
and that sort of stuff, so.
I think you have one line in there about, you know, being respectful and but there's not like
Yeah.
there's nothing
So, I I have seen um a board uh rules of procedure bylaws that have had uh codes of conduct in them. So.
Yeah. You're only going to nine oh five, so I think we're pretty much done. You guys look pretty wiped out.
Yeah. So, like, I'd like to ask the the one thing. We talked at the very beginning about what you hope to get from this meeting. And without going back and revisiting them and going into detail and going down rabbit holes and getting in the weeds, did you get what you wanted from this meeting that it was worth your time?
I think it was, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. And that's not
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Good.
That's what we want, that's what we called for.
Alright.
There's only one other thing that I would like. Could you email me the old budget that you learned in your budget class, what a budget is?
Oh, the definition?
Yeah.
Oh, that's
Yeah, I wrote that
Just, oh yeah, I figured it out.
Yeah.
You could send that to me, that and you know, no rush on that, thank you.
We're gonna send you the smart worksheet sample social media policies and this will be the definition of a budget, right?
Fine, yeah. Yeah.
How about Frank in here?
A budget is a plan
For what you intend to do.
What you intend to do, express in dollars.
Expressed in terms of dollars, expressed in terms of dollars, yeah.
Maybe we do a banner that's a town.
Um
Town
Maybe
You know.
It's like
I think I read the statement.
I have a I have a favorite. You're all familiar with um Alice in Wonderland, yeah, St. Clair, yeah, St. Louis. Um there's an illustration in the original edition that I really like. And so Alice is walking down the road and there's a fork in the road and she encounters a Cheshire cat in the tree. And she says out loud, well, which way should I go? The cat says, well, that's where you wanna get to. She says, well, I don't really know. She says, it doesn't really matter, it's any road will get there. And I used that with the town council because for years uh we would start budget processes without a clear idea of what it is we wanted to accomplish and it just wasn't working for anybody. Um and we got to a point where we were doing more goal setting and more um intentional budgeting, so.
And we're gonna wish you best of luck with your twenty fourth, your workshop on the twenty fourth.
Twenty second, yes.
Workshop, or twenty second, or whatever it was, yeah.
Twenty second, oh yeah.
But it's my thirty fourth birthday, so it's
Oh, really?
confusing the numbers.
That's good. Does that count as the cheese because you mentioned multiple times?
Yes, yes, I'm excited.
Hopefully forgive, hopefully forgive.
It's the rabbit.
Well, thank you very much.
Um, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, we do appreciate that.
I mean, this this really is uh fun. There there's a little more, I think, that we um enjoy doing that one to that to help you and maybe be successful. I know that sounds corny for people out there, I don't care.
Yeah, we really heard
No, it's great.
We care a lot.
Love it. It's okay.
It's for all of you. Oh, great, yeah.
I can email you
We could, I I said this to Jerry before, but I love what
Love that one.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate this, yeah. Right, I will see you soon, I'm sure.
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, okay, guys.
Um so next on our agenda, the consent agenda.
Next time the meeting will
I'm sorry, yeah, we have a motion to extend the meeting till nine fifteen.
Okay.
Alright, any discussion? On favor?
Fine.
Any opposition? We extend the meeting, motion by Josh, uh seconded by Ted, till nine fifteen. Um the consent agenda, I wanted to remove um the uh I wanted to remove the application for appointments cuz I was hoping we could chat with the people who applied for the application for appointment or at least ask them a couple of follow up questions, cuz I just don't wanna vote on that tonight.
Okay, so do you want my answer?
Yeah. Yeah. That's just my, uh we just haven't had a turnover on the planning board in a long time. Um so I'll I'll uh I wanna make sure we get a chance to chat with folks and then I know we have some heavy lifts coming up too. Um so hoping to chat with both of them. Does anyone uh opposed to that? Alrighty, um well, so I will just say I will move to table part B of the consent agenda. Until next meeting with the intent of asking those individuals to come for us to speak with pretty quick.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Alright, do we have a any discussion on the motion? On favor? Any opposition? See none. Give that to the twenty second. That's a busy meeting, but just wanna meet that dinner first. Um do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as uh modified? So it would just be a, okay, Josh, second? Any discussion? On favor? Any opposition? As such unanimously, upcoming meetings, all the waste committee on the fourteenth, Eureka Center at six thirty, select board July twenty second, twenty twenty five here at six thirty at the fire station. Planning board August sixth, twenty twenty five at the fire station, ad committee meeting August sixth, twenty twenty five at the Eureka Center at seven P M. Our upcoming meetings on July twenty second are gonna be uh board and committee goals where we hear from all of the different uh committees. And then August twelfth will be our tax commitment and review of the employee handbook, which I'm very excited for. Do we need an executive session? Alright, see none, do a motion to adjourn at nine ten.
Or we skip at the manager report?
Oh, sorry, Jerry, I skipped right over your manager report. I flipped the page.
Thank you. Um so, yeah, a couple things. I got this uh contract for dispatch for fire chief in Chicago County that needs to be signed.
Mm-hmm.
So I can have the board chair sign it, I mean, give me the authority to sign it. It's for this year, January first, twenty uh well, it goes from January one twenty six to December third, first, twenty twenty six.
I'm filing Jerry's.
They wanna sign and it's to the tune of definitive prices. It's in chief's budget, so. So it's to the two of twenty four thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and eighty one cents. Can I like this sign?
Yeah.
Or do you Do you assign or can sign it?
I'm filing Jerry's signing it, so.
Can you move back one?
Uh yeah, do we have a motion to approve Jerry to sign off on the uh contract for dispatch services? So, uh second? Any discussion? On favor? Any opposition? See none?
Um so Calvin has hired a new truck driver laborer.
Oh.
His name is uh Jason Thompson, he'll start tomorrow. He lives in Lewiston, so that's good. So we're still looking for a mechanic. I'll just say that he had someone come in that was interested. They work for Lewiston now and when he found out what we pay compared to Lewiston, he said, no thanks. So just to let you know. And I kinda talked about it a little bit um about the Eureka Center, lumping that in with the cabinet master's thing and later we come in, we talked about that and some of the criteria on the form that cabinet master's looking for is, you know, what's your budget and what's your plan? Really don't have one for the Eureka Center, so we can't, we really fell out appropriately, so we'll just move forward with the disembo slash ban stand. I call it forward because some people get angry if you call it a ban stand, some people get angry if you call it a disembo, so I call it forward. And the last thing I have is, uh I won't be here next um on the twenty second, we're gonna vacation. We are live now with our um new financial software. Kim's working with it right now. It seems to be going pretty well. There's there's a there's a um you know, it's a lot of software, so there's a lot of learning and tweaking and stuff, but she's she's doing really good with that. We actually, the staff right now has a lot of balls and Justin's working on uh thirty day notices with tax and he's got the commitment coming up and Alan's straight out, uh codes enforcement is straight out. And uh I gotta really give George to manage, that guy, he's a really good planner. That guy can bag all some work. He's great.
Yeah.
And then
He himself.
He, we are, and even him and I, believe it or not, we get into some what I call spiritual conversations because, you know, some of us philosophically may not agree, but I have mad respect for that guy. He's really, really good at what he does, so. All staffs can agree, so. That's all, concludes my report.
Thanks, Jerry. Uh boardroom reports, I don't have anything other than looking forward to the next two meetings. Uh Josh, you get?
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright.
Move adjourned.
Move we adjourned from Josh, we have a second. Alright, on any discussion, see none, on favor? Any opposition? See none, at adjourned at nine P M.
First.
I'll let you.
Yeah. Yeah, I got it. I just hadn't seen it before.
Oh, these are, these are